Check, but also Mayor, I believe we need to do a report out on the closed session.
After the pledge.
Yeah, yes, yes, I usually report out when it it's after the city manager's.
Overview.
Right?
Okay, yeah, gotcha. I think we have a quorum. All right, let's call this meeting to order. It's 7:01 and we have quite an agenda here tonight, so I'd like to use every moment that we can to get through it. Can we start with roll call Elaine?
Of course. Councilmember Snyder.
Present.
Councilmember Hollibur.
Present.
Councilmember Fong.
Here.
Vice Mayor Leva, I mean Vice Mayor Pappin, excuse me, or Mayor Leva.
Here.
Thank you. All councilmembers are present.
Thank you. Could we please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So tonight we have a proclamation proclaiming the month of June as Pride Month and we have receiving this ceremonial, excuse me, this proclamation, San Mateo County LGBTQ Commissioner Crystal Cancino. Crystal, are you there?
Yes, I am here, Mayor.
Okay, great. Welcome.
Thank you.
The city of Millbury is committed in supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and/or questioning intersex and asexual LGBTQIA+. People in our diverse community and whereas June has historically been a symbolic month in America, which LGBTQIA+ persons and allies come together in various celebrations of pride to support the community's right to live their lives freely and authentically and LGBTQIA+ community has worked tirelessly for respect, equality, and their very right to exist. LGBTQIA+ individuals have had immeasurable impacts to the cultural, civic, and economic success of our country. And whereas although advancements have been made with respect to equitable treatment for LGBTQIA+ persons, they still face discrimination simply for being who they are, thus making it important for all communities to stand up and show support for all of those affected. And whereas LGBTQIA+ youth are not, are at especially high risk of experienced discrimination, mistreatment, and even violence, which could lead to increased suicide rates. The city of Millbury is committed to ensuring our youth are safe, valued, and supported. And whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for our LGBTQIA+ and community, and it is an opportunity to act and engage in dialogue, to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal rights. And whereas, we encourage residents to recognize and acknowledge the contributions of LGBTQIA+ members of our community as we continue to advance the principles of liberty, equity, and inclusiveness for all. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Millbury City Council, do hereby proclaim June 2022 as Pride Month. And we have accepting this, Crystal, where I don't see you. How come I'm missing you? Oh, there you are. Did you want to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor Olivia. I do, I just want to thank you, Mayor Olivia, Vice Mayor Pappin, and City Council and the rest of the citizens of Millbury. I'm definitely honored to accept this proclamation. I prepared a speech, but I kind of wanted to make it a little more personal. Last year was the first year that any city has publicly invited, promoted, a flag raising. Out of, out of all, all the cities, it was widely promoted, and that's the first time I've ever seen that. And, and it was you guys. And I was there, a bunch of other commissioners were there, and we definitely felt that support. I think majority of your city council was there as well. And just even provide that space, recognizing all the work that we're doing, recognizing our lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, intersex, asexual allies, and two-spirited people here in San Mateo County. I know that visibility is really important to our community, and I just appreciate so much that year after year that we've asked, and sometimes we didn't even have to ask for you guys to proclaim June as Pride Month. We definitely appreciate your guys' support, so I just wanted to first and foremost say that. I do also want to invite all of you, this is going to be the first time, our San Mateo County Board of Supervisors have taken steps to return our Pride celebration in person, which is happening on June 11th. This is the first time in two years. So I think, you know, we've been working really hard at planning that, or our Pride Committee has been working really hard at that. So I definitely wanted to extend that invite. And again, thank you so much for issuing the proclamation. And I know you guys have a flag raising that's already scheduled. I saw you guys are promoting it. And again, we just really, really feel the love and support. So I appreciate that. And I'm so proud of our, our, our community in Millbury.
Thank you very much. That was very nice to hear. Well, we're proud of you too. So can you keep up the good work as well?
Thank you.
Councilmember Snyder.
Thank you, Mayor. Really quick, it's been some heartbreaking national news for the LGBTQIA+ etc. community. I want you to know that if there's local actions we should take, please reach out to us so that we can help on that national stage. And our hearts with you, and I love your background.
Thank you so much. But we'll definitely be reaching out. I'm sure that our partnership isn't just going to stop at proclamations and at flag raisings. I know that we've been, I've had conversations last year with, I think it's with your Cultural Arts Commission. So I do know that maybe we could definitely do more partnerships in the future. So thank you for that reminder.
Love it. Thank you. Okay, well, I'm going to go down to a next presentation from the, excuse me, Millbury Elementary School District, Bond Measure E informational presentation. And you know, before this presentation, it just can't go unsaid. I mean, we had, we're talking about the safety in schools and children and respect. And these ceremonial, ceremonial presentations are exactly what we work towards for what, what won't happen that happened in the news today. So Vice Mayor, was, was it 18 schoolchildren that were shot?
18 elementary schoolchildren in Texas.
So, I mean, I mean, we all, we can't, we can't, all five of us work very hard to make our schools safe, have leaders like what we just experienced with Crystal, and now we're going to hear from Deborah French. And whatever we can do to facilitate safety amongst our community. And for a moment, just say we're so sorry for the horrific news in Texas. So I didn't mean to make that your, your entrance, Deborah, but I just, I just needed a moment to bring it up. It couldn't go unnoticed with all of us.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, thank you for allowing me to be here tonight for this informational presentation, Mayor and Vice Mayor and councilmembers. I do want to say that unfortunately, as I've been preparing this evening, my statement that I'm sending out to our dear community and team that the numbers have changed in Texas. It's 19 children and two teachers. So it does continue to evolve as the night, as the night goes on. I would just obviously like to echo what was said, there's nothing more important than the safety of all of our children. And this unimaginable, unthinkable act of taking out any kind of anger on young innocent children is just, it's beyond anyone's comprehension. So I can say personally that my heart and prayers and thoughts and my, my just, actually, my whole being is with those families in Texas who sent their kids to school today, never imagining the horror that would ensue. So, thank you. I am here tonight to just give an informational update on Measure E. The elementary, for the Millbury Elementary School District, the bond measure that is on the ballot June 7th. Can we forward this? Thank you. So just for some, just for some information, I'm sure that most of you already know this because you're Millbury residents, but I would like to just remind you that Millbury School District and have some of the best elementary and middle schools among, among our local friends as well as across the state. So we're very proud of what we're able to do for our students in our schools. And our students receive strong instruction, which prepares them to excel in high school, college, and beyond, or in their vocation, or whatever their choices are as they move through their educational journey. Next slide, please. It's important to note that very regularly in a school district that we conduct facilities assessments, at least once every five to seven years to, for an indication of what, what kind of upgrades are needed in our schools. Similar to our homes, you know, our homes get old and things need to be repaired, and the same thing's happened in schools. They're, they're, they're brick and mortar, just like our homes are. And so a facility assessment just indicates whether or not the classrooms or facilities need to be upgraded. And there's indication that there's aging classrooms, of course, in all schools and in all districts need to be repaired to ensure that there are the most modern upgrades, not only for safety standards, but also for learning and for academic. Next slide, please. On June, the measure was unanimously voted on and by our Board of Trustees, and the measure will appear on the June 7th, 2022 ballot. The measure can generate potentially up to $6.3 million annually for a total of $90 million. And the measure would cost three cents per hundred dollars of a property's assessed value per year. Next slide, please. If Measure E is approved, there are many things that, that have been indicated in our, in our ballot language that would happen as a result of that. Potentially protecting the quality of academic instruction in core subjects like math, science, reading and writing. Update science, technology, engineering, and math labs at our schools. We would ensure students, access for our students with disabilities. And provide advanced instruction, which prepares our students for high school and college in the areas especially of science, math, and engineering. And update our classroom technology to support 21st century learning and beyond, of course. So as we know, technology changes rapidly, so making sure that we're caught up with that. Some of those things that aren't quite as noticed and as exciting, but very needed. Updated, updating our fire, HVAC, and plumbing systems. And then really making sure there's an emphasis on improving student health and safety, and improving school ground, improving our flow, our traffic flow and safety on our school grounds. Next slide, please. All proceeds from the measure would be set aside for local schools. So those all go to the schools in Millbury. And no funds can be taken by the state of California. And as with all bond measures, an independent citizens oversight committee will be required and will be formed. And no funds may be used for administrator salaries that come from of the bond. And next slide, please. And this kind of brings us to the conclusion, but certainly we welcome your thoughts, your questions, and your comments if there are any this evening. I know that Ralph Cram, our CBO, is on the line with us as well as our, so we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So just to kind of sum it up, if you don't mind, it's about $300 for a million dollar home per year?
Three cents per, yes, yes.
Well, that's a good sign. We don't have any questions. So if everybody hasn't voted, or they have any additional questions, I'm sure until June 6th, you'll be, you'll be available to answer any questions. Is that correct?
Absolutely. We're always available for questions. Certainly, we can, you know, if someone reaches out, we're happy to call you back and provide any information that we can as regarding our campaign. I'm sorry, regarding the measure itself. And then you can certainly reach out to campaign folks for information, more than just informational components.
Deborah, I really appreciate the presentation. Thank you for being here tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Okay, with that, next, we're going to go to agenda overview and staff briefing. Tom, would you like to speed read?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. Good evening to you. Good evening to the City Council and the community. Tom Williams, City Manager. So after the agenda overview, we do have our normal items calendar of events, reports of bills and claims. Then we have several meeting minutes, meeting March 8th, March 22nd, April 26th. Those are our regular meetings. And then two special meetings, the meeting minutes of May 3rd and May 5th of 2022. We have no reports from any committee or commission chairs this evening. Public communication, public communication is for any member of the public to address the City Council on any item not on the agenda. Members of the public are limited to three minutes in their communication to the City Council. Then we move on to the consent calendar. We have four items on the consent calendar. Item number five is to receive the and file the monthly general fund financial report for the period ending April 30th, 2022. We have item number six is our monthly recreation center design and construction update. Item number seven is to waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance repealing chapter 6.40 of the Millbury Municipal Code and adopting a new chapter 6.40 that regulates the use of disposable food service ware by food facilities and city facilities to align with new state law. Item number eight is to consider resolution authorizing city manager to execute an amendment to the agreement in the amount of $56,887 with MBC custodial for janitorial services for the new Millbury Recreation Center. This would increase the total agreement for all of our citywide facilities with MBC custodial to $208,118 a year. We have then moved to public hearing. We have one public hearing item this evening. That's item number nine. And it is to consider and take action on the approval or denial of 990 Larkspur Drive. It is a single-family residential project. There are two items. One is to waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance for a proposed zoning map amendment. This is pursuant to Millbury Municipal Code Title 10 of our Planning and Zoning Code. That includes the parcel 998 Larkspur Drive. And then the second action is to adopt a resolution approving the design review permit with the floor air ratio setback and height exceptions for the single-family home, as well as a lot line adjustment for several parcels, including 1002 Crestview Drive, 998 Larkspur Drive, and 996 Larkspur Drive. Then moving on to existing business, item number 10 is to consider the adoption of a resolution of necessity, declaring a portion of certain property interest, APN 093352020, as necessary for public purposes and authorizing initiation of condemnation proceedings for the acquisition of property rights to extend California Drive and the overhead utilities. Item number 11 in existing business is to receive the proposed operating budget for fiscal year 2022, 2023, and adopt a resolution appropriating the operating budget for fiscal 2023. Item number 12 is to consider a resolution authorizing city manager designate to execute a revised lease agreement with Millbury Montessori School for a licensed preschool and early childhood recreation development center at the new Millbury Recreation Center. Item number 13 is a COVID-19 update and preparation for hybrid public meetings, in-person public meetings of the City Council. At the request of our committee, our subcommittee, technology subcommittee that heard this item, we would like to remove this item from the agenda this evening as it will not be heard, and we'll place it on the next City Council meeting. That's my understanding. And I'll quickly get the nod from Councilmember Fong and Councilmember Hollibur that that is correct.
Yeah, we're just continuing this.
Correct. Give me a little more time on this.
Okay, thank you. Item number 14 is to consider the formation and selection of various city council ad hoc subcommittees for the city's 75th anniversary celebration starting in January of 2023. Then we move to new business. Item number 15 is to consider a resolution to launch a partnership between the City Millbury Public Works Department, the Community Enhancement Advisory Committee, and volunteers in the community to implement the Adopt a Spot Pilot Program. Item number 16 is a request for a parking lot and street closer for the Millbury Cultural Committee for the Mid-Autumn Festival on September 24th and 25th. We did receive a request from the Millbury Cultural Committee to remove this item from the agenda as this will not be heard this evening, and they rescinded their application. Item number 17 is to consider a resolution approving a revised schedule of maximum garbage rates in accordance with the franchise agreement with South San Francisco Scavenger Company. And the last item, number 18, is to approve the selection of historical photos to be displayed in the new Recreation Center main hallway corridors as recommended by the Millbury Cultural Arts Advisory Committee and the Millbury Historic Society. So Mayor, real quick, just a couple of comments. The main one is if everybody puts on their calendar the ribbon cutting ceremony for the opening of the new Millbury Recreation Center on Sunday, or excuse me, Saturday, June 11th. The ribbon cutting will start at 11:00 a.m. sharp. The gathering for the, for the event will start at 10:30 a.m. We have demonstration classes that our Recreation Department offers. We have a barbecue, hamburgers and hot dogs that the Lions Club will be, will be providing, popsicle giveaways. Actually, we, we have t-shirts made for the community for the grand opening, and we hope that everybody comes out for the ribbon cutting. I'd also like to recognize and thank every, everyone and the City Council, especially for the ribbon cutting of the new playground that officially opened last Friday evening, May 13th. Also need to recognize our Public Works crews. We just finished up Public Works Week, May 15th through the 21st. And I think everyone knows how hard our Public Works crews, you know, work, 365 days a year. They, they, you know, keep our storm drain system operational for storms. And, and they're out there and doing more with less and stretching the taxpayer dollar. And I would just like to recognize Public Works Week, the great work of, of every single person in our Public Works Department and a job well done for the city. So Mayor, that concludes a brief update and the overview of the agenda.
Thank you. Before we move on, we do have a report out from closed session, and then Vice Mayor, I'll get to you.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to report that the council did meet in closed session to discuss two matters of real property negotiations at a special meeting called at 6 o'clock p.m. today, just preceding this regular council meeting. The two items of real property negotiations pertain to one property at the corner of Millbury Avenue and Rollins Road. And, and property in, in and around the BART station, the APN number is noted on the agenda is 093352020. The public should know that there was no formal action taken to be reported out from these closed sessions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Real quick, we asked that the flags be lowered tomorrow in remembrance of the tragedy in Texas today, and hopefully not to be repeated ever again. And then secondarily, item 18 involving the Rec Center and photographs was not presented to the Rec Center Subcommittee. So I appreciate all the work and effort that went into this and, but it's listed as an action item, and I'm not sure that that is appropriate at this time. So.
How about if we wait till we get to 18 for the presentation and you could decide if it's appropriate?
Thank you.
And as far as the flags go, I think that our President of the United States asked that everybody, Tom, City Manager Williams, did you say that?
Yes, Mayor, yeah, the President did order the, the flags to half-staff, and I, our, our flags are at half-staff earlier today.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, let's move to the approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of March 8th, 2022, the regular meeting of March 22nd, 2022, the regular meeting minutes of April 26th, 2022, a special meeting minutes of May 3rd, 2022, a special meeting of minutes, May 5th, 2022.
So moved.
Councilmember Snyder.
I would have made the motion off second.
Oh, thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Maybe call for the vote.
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Hollibur.
Aye.
Councilmember Fong.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pappin.
Aye.
Mayor Aliva.
Aye.
Five sets of minutes are approved by the vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Tonight, we have no oral reports from any city committees or commission chairs. So I'll move to public communication, and that's reserved for people wishing to comment on anything, any item not appearing on the agenda tonight. Do we have any raised hands? We do. We do. We have three? Four?
It looked like Frank Barrow is also raising his hand.
Five? Perfect. We have five hands raised, and so we'll start three minutes, please, with Amy Lauer.
Thank you, Mayor Aliva. Hello, City Council and community members. I'm Amy Lauer, and I'm here tonight as a follow-up to something I mentioned in public comments six weeks ago on April 12th, when I asked that the city of Millbury pass an ordinance banning flavored tobacco. I won't go into all the details. Sure, you can imagine with flavors that sound like kids candy and ice cream, why? We should join 10 cities and unincorporated San Mateo in this ban. Learning what the protocol was to get an item added to what I now know is a very lengthy agenda, I did send a request two days later on April 14th to be added to the 26th agenda. When Agenda was published on the 22nd, I saw it was not included, and I asked once again, thinking perhaps it was an oversight, and I was told that it was being considered and presented, and I, someone would hear from me, I would hear from someone. I didn't hear from anyone. So two weeks later, I put out a survey to understand from community members, maybe I'm the only one who's concerned about health and children and access and the signal it sends to our community. So I created a survey which went out on May 11th, and in 12 days, we got 68 responses. 97% of those who responded say strongly agree or agree, Millbury should ban, pass an ordinance banning flavored tobacco. So I'm here not just for myself, but I did let everyone know on Nextdoor, and when I sent the survey out in the email, that I would be representing their voices. So here, Amy times 68. Thank you so much for your consideration, and I do hope to see this on a future agenda.
Thank you. Former Mayor Fogarty.
Your honor. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I would like to ask that the council look into the use of the city's police power to zone out possession of weapons, guns, within so many feet of a school. We all feel very, very badly about what happened, and I think it's time to do something. So the, the city is authorized to use police power so long as there's a rational relationship to a legitimate purpose such as protection of the public's health, morals, safety, or general welfare. It's time to do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Next up, Joy Henry.
Thanks, Mayor Aliva. Joy, Joy Passmon to Henry. So good evening and good evening, Vice Mayor Pappin, Councilmembers Hollibur, Fong, and Snyder, and City Manager Williams. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I just wanted to reiterate what Superintendent French said about Measure E, that this is important. We have a lot more people that are not within the school community. And we wanted to take this opportunity to really reach out to everyone on this call right now and beyond, because all of you have the networks to reach out to more folks than. to reach out to more folks than we do. It is really just to go out and vote yes for for Measure E. This is how schools, you know, get funded and and make money, or sorry, not make money, but get funded for facilities, infrastructure, and things like that. So we would appreciate your endorsement and your vote. So make sure you do that. And if you have any questions, I'm on the bond committee along with our chairs here, Ms. Morris and Mr. Tadhani. So thank you.
I'm sorry, Joy, if I missed you when we had that presentation.
No, no worries.
I didn't see your hand up. Michael Kelly.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and esteemed City Council. My name is Michael Kelly. I'm a registered voter from Millbury. In two weeks, on June seventh, voting will conclude for the San Mateo County Sheriff race, and I implore every registered voting age Millbury citizen to cast their ballot. Over the last few city council meetings, I've shared my dismay about the state of policing in Millbury and San Mateo County. Our incumbent sheriff has had six years of failed policy scandal and controversy, yet Mayor Oliver, Vice Mayor Pappen, and Councilman Fung are still endorsing and have contributed financially or fundraised for his campaign. The latest dismal reports that have come out from the sheriff's office are incredibly disturbing accounts of more abuse of power and pay-to-play politics, where about forty-five of his largest financial contributors have been issued concealed carry weapon permits, more guns on the street. There are so few of these that ever get issued, yet dozens and dozens have recently been granted to his largest financial backers. It has every hallmark of yet another abuse of power by the incumbent sheriff. In the last few months, Sheriff Bolanos' prior campaign manager, Barbara Bonilla, was allowed to plead guilty to just one of the seven felonies she was charged with for embezzling funds from the Sheriff Activities League. It's a county program meant to help help at-risk youth, and she got off with simple probation, paying back the money she stole from kids. She worked for Bolanos. He didn't press charges, and Deputy Attorney Wagstaff, who is for reinstating the death penalty, and another endorser, Bolanos, accepted her plea to avoid jail time and dropped six of the felony charges. Even more instances, the sheriff abusing his power. Somehow, three of our five elective officials have maintained their support for this scandal-plagued sheriff that embraces a warrior culture of policing. His opponent, our own Millbury Police Chief Christina Corpus, embraces a guardian culture of policing. I couldn't figure out why Mayor Oliva, Vice Mayor Pappen, and Councilman Fung would support such a flawed candidate for sheriff, especially over Millbury's own highly-accomplished scandal-free chief of police. Then a sheriff department employee suggested, I look at the publicly available four sixty filing reports. I did. Wow. Now a possible explanation. For years, Sheriff Bolanos has been financially contributing to Mayor Oliva's campaigns for city council, for failed run for state senate, and he's been financially contributing over years to Vice Mayor Pappen's campaigns for council, as well as for her sister Diane Pappen's campaign. Is it that our mayor and our vice mayor are beholden and indebted to our scandal-plagued sheriff? In full disclosure, I haven't seen anything that suggests he contributed to Councilman Fung's campaign, so his support of Bolanos is still a mystery to me. Mayor Oliva, Vice Mayor Pappen, Councilman Fung, you still have two weeks left to publicly rescind your endorsement of our corrupt sheriff and make a positive difference in improving policing here in Millbury. For your sakes and ours, I urge the three of you, as our elected representatives.
Thank you very much. Angelina, you're up next.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. I wanted to speak tonight about the cancellation of the Citizens Academy. This was a really exciting program. I think, you know, a lot of work went into preparing and planning it, but a very short turnaround turnaround time was put out to market it and do the outreach. There was feedback given that Saturdays would probably be pretty challenging, and thirty-five for round, thirty-five participants for a first-go-round with a short recruitment time was probably not necessarily realistic. It's too bad that there wasn't, instead of just making a decision and notifying the applicants, maybe reaching out to folks, seeing if people could adjust schedules, work together on a new timeline, and ask those that signed up to even do more outreach to help recruit, get us to fifteen or something, rather than completely canceling and waiting till the fall. Concerned that, you know, often there's things that happen, decisions are made, that it's somewhat performative, that our community input is important and heard. There's a lot of, yes, you said that, thank you, but not a lot of action and follow-up. So I look forward to the Citizens Academy in the fall and hope we can learn from our mistakes with not enough outreach, choosing the dates that were scheduled, and really plan better for the fall so that it can be a really successful program. Thank you.
Thank you. Normally, Angelina, we're not allowed to respond to a public comment, but but quite often, if we were in the chambers, we would allow staff to take, like, have a conversation with you outside the chamber. So City Manager, I don't mean to put you on the spot here, but is there a quick response that you can you can talk to Angelina about?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I did respond in kind of a lengthy email and information that we received from other citizens kind of across the community that there was more agreement to postpone it to the fall, because people did have scheduled vacations during the summer and also on Saturdays. So that's why I made a decision to postpone it to the fall.
Thank you very much, because I think that Angelina and I would agree with, I think this council would agree with you. We want this to to go sooner than later. And we're trying to get our, you know, the most engagement we can. And so it's it's a shame that we have to delay it, but I I realize from the city staffing part and not the not the great great response that we had. Let's do this. Let's make a pact. Let's make, let's get more people to sign up for the next one. Let's all get engaged to 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 get the date out there and and make sure that everybody signs up. Vice Mayor, did you want to comment on that, too, since I let everybody, since I did, too?
Yeah, no, I mean, we do committed to seeing this go forward here, and postponement is very different than a cancellation. Angelina, thank you for bringing this forward to us. Greatly appreciate all you're doing. Thank you so much. So hopefully, we'll get more going.
Thank you. Okay, looks like no hands.
Frank Barrow also.
Frank, I'm sorry, I don't see your hand up. Hi, Frank. Go ahead. You have three minutes. Frank, are you on mute?
Okay, there we go. Could you hear me?
Perfectly.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Anna Oliva, Vice Mayor Gina Pappen, City Council, and guests. My name is Frank Barrow, president of the Millbury School District. In two thousand and seven, when I was elected, Millbury School District was assessed by contractors, engineers, and architects one hundred and ten million dollars for improvements, renovations, and ADA-compliant facilities. One year later, we passed a thirty-million-dollar bond, Measure X, by seventy-four point six point nine, seven percent, sixty-nine percent, seventy-four point sixty-nine percent. Three years later, we passed Measure N by fifty-eight point five percent. It's been fourteen years since passing our first bond, and eleven years later with our second bond. That left fifty million dollars worth of work we never finished. We desperately need to finish our work and bring our classrooms into the twenty-first century for our children's learning. Strong schools bring families to Millbury and make our city grow and thrive. Please vote yes on Measure E. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, with that being said, we are completed public comments. Move to the consent calendar, and on the consent calendar, we have five, six, seven, and eight. Receive and file monthly general fund, financial reports for the period ending April thirtieth through two thousand and twenty-two. We have our recreation design, center design and construction update. We have number seven, waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance repealing the chapters six point four zero of the Millbury Municipal Code and adopting a new chapter six point four oh regulating the use of disposable food service ware by the food facilities and city facilities to align with new state laws. And number eight, a resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute an amendment to the agreement in the amount of fifty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars with MBC Custodial, Inc. for janitorial services for the new Millbury Recreation Center, increasing the agreement's annual not to exceed the amount for citywide services to two hundred and eight thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars. Councilmember Schneider.
Motion to approve all four items in the consent calendar.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Oliver, second. Can we please call for the vote?
Councilmember Snyder.
Aye.
Councilmember Oliver.
Aye.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pappen.
Aye.
Mayor Oliva.
Aye.
The consent calendar passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is moving to public hearing. So this is an action to approve nine ninety Larkspur Drive Single Family Residential Project and to waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance for the proposed zoning map amendment pursuant to the Millbury Municipal Code Title Ten Planning and Zoning Article ten ten five three amendments for nine nine eight Larkspur Drive, parcel number zero two one two one zero two eight zero, to change the zoning map from the open space district to the single-family residential zoning district and be adopt a resolution approving the design review permit with a floor area ratio setback in height exceptions, number fifteen ten dash zero zero seven, and a lot line adjustment of parcels located at ten oh two Crestview Drive, parcel number zero two one two one zero two six zero nine nine eight Larkspur Drive, parcel number zero two one two one zero and two eight zero, and nine nine six Larkspur Drive, parcel number zero two one two one zero two nine zero, to allow the construction of a three-story single-family resident on a vacant lot located at nine ninety Larkspur Drive in the single-family residential R one zoning district. And before we go any further, I'd like to open up the public hearing.
Mayor, thank you. I would just like to hand it over to our Community Development Director, Darcy Smith, for a presentation and then questions of the city council.
Yes, hello. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. We're here tonight for this public hearing on this project, and I'm Darcy Smith, your Community Development Director. I'll be here tonight, assisted by Roscoe Mata, who will bring up the staff presentation. He's the city's planning manager, and he's also assisted tonight by Sam Fielding, the project planner, and we're all available tonight to answer any questions that you have after this presentation. So with that, I'll hand it over to Roscoe Mata, who will make the staff presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. As mentioned, my name is Roscoe Mata, planning manager. I'll be making the presentation for this item, item nine, nine ninety Larkspur Drive, the single-family residential project. Before I begin, I'd just like to note that the additional correspondence was received prior to the meeting, and this correspondence was forwarded to your emails. Tonight's action is to, one, waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance for proposed zoning map amendments for nine ninety-eight Larkspur Drive and adopt a resolution approving the designer view permit with floor ratio setback in height exceptions and a lot line adjustment of the parcels at one oh two nine ninety-eight, one oh two Crestview, nine ninety-eight Larkspur, and nine ninety-six Larkspur. By way of background, on May second, planning commission adopted resolutions twenty-two dash zero seven and twenty-two dash zero eight. We have a vote of three zero two to a regimen, the city council approve the ordinance and the resolution and the location of sites is nine ninety nine ninety-eight Larkspur Drive and one oh two Crest. This is, the pictures on this screen are the subject site, as you can see, as denoted by the yellow arrows, the proposed house location in this lot, just behind one oh two Crestview Drive, and then picture of the existing conditions from the street on the right. And by reference, the city's water pump station is just to the right of the proposed site. The site is extremely constrained. There's a steeply sloped condition that traverses the entire project site. It's narrow. Lot is about thirty-five feet to forty-six point nine one feet, along eighty-one feet of the Larkspur Drive frontage, and the narrowness in the lot and the two-car garage required is required on the ground floor, and that contributes the constraints of the site. This is, this is a site plan showing the three sites in question. As you can see, the aerial view on the left in and the yellow lines indicate the current property lines, and then the site plan that shows it on a site plan view with the dash lines on the right. The the applicant's current home is on one zero zero two Crestview, and this site will be configured to this approximately this red boundary on the right. And then the proposed site will be combined, the two sites on Larkspur Drive will be combined and a portion of the subject, the applicant's home, the rear back portion, will be combined with the other two portions to create the proposed building sites. The requested applications for you this evening is a zoning map amendment and a lot line adjustment, designer view permit with FER setback in height exceptions. The new lot size will be eighty-four, a little over eighty-four hundred square feet, and the new single-family home will be around forty-six hundred square feet with thirty-eight of that, three eight hundred fifty-three is habitable square feet. The house will be four bedrooms and will include a required two-car garage. Apologize for the the low resolution. The the image on the left is the general plan and is in in the the image will show that the yellow areas are low single-family designation. And then the zoning map is on to the right, which is currently open space. The action tonight is to make the zoning consistent with the general plan designation of low-density residential. And in the chart here, you can see the three subject parcels before you tonight, which would make the the parcels are consistent with the general plan designation. So again, this is the site plan that shows the proposed configuration. There will be two lots, one L-shaped lot off of Larkspur Drive, and then the the existing home of the applicant will remain on Crest Crestview. And this is the existing home that will be reconfigured, and then the blue lines indicate the new proposed lot. With regards to the technical geotech study, there was a geotech study that was prepared by Atlas Consultants that was submitted by the applicant, and this was reviewed by the city's peer reviewer, Carton Shires, and reviewed for consistency with geotechnical engineering principles, and the city's peer review recommended geotechnical approval of the proposed project along with the recommendations and conditions that the geotechnical plan review will be required during the building plan check and inspections of the geotechnical construction during the construction of the project. This is the front elevation of the home proposed as viewed from Larkspur Drive. And then these are the two side elevations, the north and the right and south and the left. The these are the renderings provided by the applicants. These are, as you can see, the two different angles showing the the garages on the lower floor with stone veneer on the ground floor, and then upper floors contain a majority of the the habitable space for the single-family home. This is the colors and materials board. As you can see here, there'll be a wood garage door, horizontal stucco channels, bronze iron railings, and some other features. bronze iron railings, and some other features, stone facade along the bottom, to help the home lend itself better to the existing, single-family neighborhood. This project is determined to be categorically exempt pursuant to section fifteen oh three, class three A of the California Quality, Environmental Quality Act, that allows for the construction of a new single-family residence. The planning commission's recommendation is to waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance amending the zoning map, and to change the zoning district from the property, for the property at nine ninety eight Larkspur Drive, from open space to single-family residential, to be consistent with the general plan designation, and adopt a resolution to approve the designer view permit with floor area ratio setback and height exceptions, and a lot line adjustment of parcels, ones that resort to Crestview Drive, nine ninety eight Larkspur Drive, and nine ninety six Larkspur Drive, to allow the construction of a three-story, single-family residence on a vacant lot to be located at nine ninety Larkspur Drive in the single-family R one zoning district, subject to attached conditions of approval, and contingent upon the ordinance being approved and becoming effective. Staff is available to answer questions. The applicant is also available to answer questions as well.
Thank you, Roscoe. Okay, so shall we do A and B separately, or do you want to just do the project altogether? Counsel?
Mayor, I have a declaration I need to make.
Did you hear my question first, though?
I'm happy to do whatever you would like, whatever's easier.
Okay, so let's, let's take A first, the wave of the first reading and introduce an ordinance for the proposed zoning map. And that would be for nine ninety eight Larkspur Drive to change the zoning map from the open space district to the single-family residential zoning district. Does your declaration have anything to pertain to that, what I'm talking about?
It has to pertain to the whole item, the whole, I should have gotten in before staff report.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, I recommend taking the whole item.
Okay, you want to do it all together?
So wait, we hear public comment once and not twice.
Excuse me, Councilmember Snyder. So I'm going to say that's A, and number B is to adopt the resolution approving the design review permit with the floor area ratio setback and the height exceptions, and a lot line adjustment of the parcels located at Crestview, Larkspur, Larkspur, and show the construction of a three, and allow the construction of a three-story, single-family resident on a vacant lot located at nine ninety Larkspur in single-family resident R one zoning district. So we're taking both of them at once, and I'm going to go to Councilmember Snyder first.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to declare that residents up there contacted me a couple of weeks ago. I watched the planning commission meeting on tape, and then later facilitated a meeting between the neighborhood and the city manager, which occurred last night, to help them. Basically, it was a meeting between them and the city manager to talk about more technical information that may not come through well at a council meeting. I am neutral in the project, but I did have communication with the neighborhood.
But you're able to vote?
Yes.
So you can't be neutral. We need a vote.
Well, I'm neutral up until I hear everything, so, yeah. I have no decision at the moment.
Do we have any other council comments?
Does the applicant or the architect have a presentation or statements to make?
Well, we'll hear from the public in a minute. Do you have any questions first, Councilmember Fong?
None at the moment.
Okay, we'll come back then. It sounds like you want me to come back to see, nobody else here. Okay, then let's go to the public. We have Olivia.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
We hear you perfect.
Okay, I'm supposed to get the six minutes allotted to me because my wife cannot represent herself, so I hope we can extend this to this regular six minutes that I can express myself, but.
Mayor? Mayor, I'm sorry, I need to come in for a point of procedure. People that want to speak in front of the city council on public comment and a public hearing, they can stand before the city council, and then they can then allocate their time to somebody else. We cannot allocate time for somebody that is not in front of the city council, that's not present at the public hearing, that would otherwise wish to speak. And so.
The requests have been made in writing to the city official by my wife that cannot attend the meeting, so I'm just asking for her email. I can send it to you, and everybody else has been sent to ask for her voice to be heard fully, because she cannot join, so.
Yes, and we, we have, we have received, we have received all the correspondence. Elaine, do you want to let everybody know how many? Before we start this?
Of course. For item nine, we have four correspondence that I have shared with the council. One of them was amended and we sent to the council, and I have responded to Mr. Maggie's wife regarding the yielding of time and what the procedure is.
Perfect, so.
Yeah, but Mayor, I, I just.
You get three minutes to speak. So if you'd like me to come back, because you'd like to give it a second thought, we're, we're going to allow you three minutes. I could go to, I could go to William Chen, and I'll come back to you. William?
May I, may I interject?
No, sir, sir, in the essence, we have a lot of, a lot of business here on the, on the agenda tonight, so please be respectful of everybody's time. I'm going to please go to Lily Chan, and I'll come back to you, sir.
Hi, good evening. This is Lily and William. I will be speaking on behalf of my husband, who is disabled, so I'm going to go first. And I would like to make some requests and some concerns here. I would like to have additional rendered three D imaging, images, including at the immediate finish of the project, of what the property would look like from our perspective, seeing as it has potential to obstruct our existing view, among other concerns that have not been addressed yet. For example, in his previous project of his one thousand two, concrete finish actually reflected light, reflected heat and light into our property, making our property actually warm as we walk out from, from the Lox to Lox Pur side. So the final project, this project coming up, makes me a little wary of what potentially the inconvenience it may have on our property, given our past experience. So, second point is that second point is that we request the project owner to survey the parameter of the property due to our past border dispute when his current home was being built. Recently, after May second, workers have also encroached, his workers has encroached on our property when doing preparatory work for his upcoming project. Number three is the management of the future project, the nine nine zero project. Who is going to be managing, and the professional contractor for this project, who is overseeing and, and give the, the neighbors advance notices? Because looking back, well, it's his encroachment on our property recently. They came, apparently he knocked on our door on the day to tell us that he's going to be, somebody's going to be coming in, so pollution and safety for the neighbor and respect for the neighbor, I think is very important, so that we can all work in harmony for this project to go through, if it goes through, and we want this to be to be good for everyone in the neighborhood. So now I'm going to move on to reading from my husband.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Lily. We're not allowing that tonight. Your husband would have to send it to us via email or read it to us?
He does not have the capability of speaking. He can send it to you. Can you send, well, he.
He can send it to us via email. We received quite, quite a few. So we're happy to receive it, more than happy to receive it.
He is, William is right here. He cannot speak because of his voice. He has Parkinson's. He cannot speak, and that's his, one of his medical issues.
Okay, let me just, let me, because we have Oliver too, that we just said.
Mayor, if I may, and I spoke with our city attorney earlier today regarding this. I think there's two different issues here.
Okay.
One is the gentleman said that he received a letter from somebody that's not in attendance, that hasn't come before the city council to speak for three minutes and request the yielding of their time. That's, I believe that is far different than Lily's request of her husband.
Thank you.
That can't speak, and he, he is requesting his time to Lily. So there is a big difference in, in the request.
Thank you for clarifying that, and Lily, we're happy to hear William's words.
Okay. If Billy has been planning his dream house for ten years, why did he put his house for sale immediately after it was remodeled during our lawsuit? We notified the realtor that there were, there was a pending lawsuit, and the house was withdrawn from the market. Second, if this was being planned for ten years, why were we given two days to sign the approval form? This is for this particular project. To reiterate our position, we support modernization and responsible development, but not at the expense of the neighborhood. This is the reason, that is the reason why I mentioned the following, why is Billy not trustworthy? In our land dispute, the binding arbitration was to move back the fence to the original property line, since he had moved it into our property during his construction. Billy would become the owner of the fence. That is part of the binding arbitration. However, his fence was rebuilt to the height of six foot six, six inches over Millbury's requirement. The completion of the fence was way past the original agreed date. The water hurdling down from his elevated driveway into our property is something Billy agreed to fix. The problem was brought to the city council meeting, but it is still not done to this day. If the city council approves this project, we must watch Billy carefully and hold him responsible.
Thank you, William and Lily. Oliver, are you, Oliver, are you ready?
Yes, and I couldn't say it better than Lily and William, considering the situation. You city officials are there to represent us as in this public hearing, the voice of the community. So let me start with the fact. Thirty-four people signed the first petition against this project, nine nine zero, online. It was communicated on five oh two, but never mentioned as a reference, but yet in a report, it was mentioned by Mr. Sam Fielding that he received opposition, but no exact reason for the opposition. Again, read the deposition and the petition published by the date before the first hearing. Next, we have seventeen people that in ink put their opposition to this project that was yet again forwarded to everybody, but the voice of the neighborhood doesn't seem to be part of this discussion. We have a thirty-two-foot house, three-story, modern, that was denied to some neighbors that were trying to develop the neighborhood, and we are all for modernizing and increasing the value and the well-being of this community. Like Lily said, we want to live in one harmony, and yet those people that just wanted to revamp the fountain were denied by the same city council members as of tonight, because their look and feel was different. Now we are looking at a Costco warehouse in an area where it's an hillside, as stand by Mills Bray initial owner, AKA Mr. Mills, and what Bray's mean to Mills Bray, reshuffling the entire hill at the benefit of one developer versus the entire community, and that's why we oppose to the rezoning and everything. Next, the three peer reviews that have been done at the expense of the taxpayer for in favor of this development that granted him ever-increasing exception and exemption all the way to thirty-two feet, because the roof cannot fit. Please listen to the last hearing. I don't have time in my allotted minute to talk about that. It's absolutely insane, all the way to the Arborist Report recommending destroying those trees that are supporting currently wildlife documented by not only Lily, but Betty, right across the street, that couldn't join the last meeting, and so on and so forth. The entire Laxpur and Crestview neighborhood really want to raise their voice clearly and loudly about the concern that they have about the stability of the hill, the construction, all the way to the rock, the excavation, the everything that has to do with the consequences of building a seventeen-foot wall, retaining wall on the front of the neighborhood. So yes, I agree, I would like to see what this will look like, not from a fake representation of an architect diagram, but from real concerned citizen of this community, I remind you, taxpayer.
Thanks you, Oliver. John, you're next. John Hippary?
All right, there we go. Thank you, Mayor Oliva, and Mayor, and also members of the city council. I want to state that Billy and Jessica Panos have been excellent neighbors for me, and even to the point of when we had the planning commission meeting, and we talked about retaining walls, and Billy came over to my place and said, well, guess what? The architect just told me that there is a retaining wall at the bottom of the driveway, and therefore, you know, your land is not going to slide into Larkspur Drive. So we have a working relationship. My main concern here is one of process. Having been involved with the continuous quality improvement movement, I believe that there are ways the processes can be improved, and what happened here is that Billy came around door to door about six days before the the planning commission meeting, goes, oh, guess what? Here's a picture of what I plan to build here and everything else, and being that I was a good neighbor and everything, so, okay, you know, I'll sign off on it. Then the other neighbors approached me and said, wait a minute, John, you realize what's going on here? And so I developed a different perspective on what's going on here. Just attending the planning commission meeting was educational in and of itself. First of all, the house before nine ninety Larkspur in the Mills estate, the planning commission just blithely said, oh, you have twenty-seven hundred square feet now, and you want to increase it to ninety-five hundred square feet? Sure, go ahead. They asked, was there any neighbor feedback? No, no neighbor feedback whatsoever. So rather than having it incumbent upon the homeowner to go door to door, maybe the city of Millbrae should become more involved in getting the message out to people in the neighborhood in terms of what is going to go, what is going on here. In 2013, this process was started, and I realized that Billy and Jessica put a lot of money into this, what have you. It's, it's been long and arduous for them. However, my dad had the, he talked to Walt Stevens, who was the previous owner of one zero zero two Crestview, and Walt Stevens says, hey, you want to buy the property, the lots available down at the bottom, and then we could develop our land. My dad said, no, I prefer it as undeveloped land. And that's kind of the way I, I feel now, too, is that the house has not been in the character of the neighborhood. Issues such as the steep slope and runoff of rain have not been adequately addressed. And the planning commissioner, who stated that we don't live in Mayberry, referring to the Andy Griffiths program, yes, we don't live in Mayberry, however, there's certain elements of change that maybe are going a little bit too far. And therefore, when you have everyone in the neighborhood who's opposed to this project, and you can just take a vote and say, okay, you know, let's, let's approve it, I, I think there are negative repercussions possible. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, John. We have one more, Betty Cromwell. Betty?
Yes, I'm here.
There you go.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Betty Cromwell. I live directly across from nine ninety Larkspur, and have so for fifty-two years. I cannot understand why the city would consider rezoning in open space to residential, just for the benefit of one individual, and to the detriment of the neighbors. There must have been a reason why the permit to build was denied for ten years. What has changed? The hill has not changed. It's the same, and has the same problems. There is still a danger of flooding and slides in heavy rains due to poor drainage. The excavation will make things worse, and the neighbors' house are at risk. The proposed house is massive for this area. It looks like an apartment house. The proposed house is massive for this area. It looks like an apartment house. The exception should not have been granted. I must say this. A day after the last meeting, the pine tree across from my house, planted fifty years ago, was altered to make it look bad. The top was cut and branches chopped on one side, but not the other side. Now there's the excuse, now there's the excuse to chop it down. The landscaping looks good in the picture, but it will never look like that in reality. Too many mature trees with nesting birds will be uprooted. And that is all I have to say. I'm very disappointed in the building. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Betty. We have another hand raised. We have Chris McMahon.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
We have you now.
Okay, good. I just have to say, I'm the architect, by the way, and I have been working with Mr. and Mrs. Panos for nine years now. And to hear these neighbors lie, they are lying. It's just as bad as Vladimir Putin. Olivier Naimi, he's a liar. And this, and how dare him say this looks like a Costco? How dare him? I have tried, gone through so many iterations with the planning department and the city. These have all been public information with design and so forth. And frankly, I've had it with NIMBY after NIMBY after NIMBY, desperate attempts to stop any kind of development who want the empty lot that they don't own to be their own personal park without having to give one thin dime. I will not have it. And the city council has to put these people down. These are NIMBYs, anti-housing people, and they're the problems with the housing issues in California right now. And they should be, shame on them. That's all I have to say.
Shame on you.
Move the close to public hearing. We're going to close the public hearing. Okay, let's close the public hearing. There's no other hands raised, I don't believe. All right. Councilmember Fung, are you ready? Would you like me to come back to you?
No, I was going to ask if the architect usually would have a comment or some kind of presentation, but I think, I think we've all heard it just a moment ago. And so if you don't mind, I'd like to start with the staff.
I was going to go to council comments. I could go to other council members if it's okay. We have Vice Mayor Gina Peppin.
I think it's important to hear from staff. They've dealt with these questions throughout the planning commission and the recent meeting with the neighbors. I think we can resolve much of this if we hear from staff, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and Councilmember Schneider? You're muted.
I agree. That's, that's fine.
Okay. Do we have planning on here? Do we have, who do we have here from staff? Let me see.
Director, yeah, and Rosco Mata, planning manager. Are there any specific questions you'd like us to respond to?
I do, Madam Mayor. So in here, there obviously there are two actions here. One is the rezoning. Well, not rezoning so much, but correcting the zoning map based on the current zoning that's been designated in the general plan. The second is the design review permit, which the planning commission has opined on. But, you know, when I was going through the entire package, I saw that there are three exceptions being solved as part of this design review application. One of them is the lot coverage, I'm not going to, it's the floor area ratio. And the other one is building height. The third is the size setback. I understand that the maximum FAR is, exception is required because of the slope of the lot. So can the staff particularly a bit about the other two exception that is being solved here?
Yeah, so as the staff report and resolution described in more detail, there are these three exceptions requested to floor ratio setback and height. Essentially, those, the zoning code is, includes the process for exceptions when there's unusual circumstances. And as you saw in the staff presentation, there are some unusual circumstances here with the topography of the site, the very steep slope. And that largely led to the request for the floor ratio increase because the way the city calculates the allowable floor area is to exclude areas of the site that have a steep slope. So for example, we exclude areas of the slope that are thirty percent. And in this particular lot, that's almost seven thousand square feet. That's over thirty percent. So that leaves a small area that is used to calculate the floor ratio. The floor ratio would be, would only allow residents of eight hundred and eleven square feet, and that's fairly small, especially when you, when you include the garage, which is a two-car garage, it's about five hundred square feet. So it, that's a constraint that's an existing condition. The height and setback exception is a little different, but also contribute largely driven by the steep hillside lot. As you saw in the rendering, this, the house is built largely into the steep slopes, so terraced, if you will. A lot of it is actually buried into the hillside. But again, we measure the height in a unique manner where we measure it from the grade to the, the steepest part of the roof. Some cities measure it a little bit different. They might measure to plate height, not count the pitched roof, but we measure it to the peak. And again, because they've had to make a small footprint, as if you look at the floor plans and build up, so it contributes to the height of it. Whereas normally, in many areas in Millbrae, we see two-story homes. This is three-story homes. Three-story home do accommodate, again, the topography. And then the setback exception, that's again largely driven by the topography. So based on the documentation and the findings that are attached and included in the resolution, you can see how staff and the planning commission who reviewed this and made the recommendation to you to approve it can make the findings for those exceptions.
Okay, so I understand the FAR exception because of the steep slope, how some of the lot area would not be counted towards buildable area. That's why you're seeking the exception. So I mean, you know, planning, I mean, for the benefit of the public, I used to be the planning commissioner here and I read these plans day in and day out. So, you know, I, we are usually very careful about granting these exceptions, especially in this case with granting three, we're being asked to grant three exceptions in a row. So these planning co are there for good reasons. And so, you know, when these exceptions are being granted, usually is for extraneous circumstances, which obviously the site has some of them. But at the same time, when three of them in a row is being solved, then that makes the question, you know, whether or not there is any design changes that could be done to perhaps mitigate some of that or lessen some of these exceptions or bring the building more to conformity. So it's the building height, you know, a thirty-two and a half. Is that correct, Darcy?
Correct.
Is there a way to bring it down to thirty, which is what the conformance of the planning co is?
Well, I should add that most of the residences' height, when measured from the side elevation, meet the height limit. And the height limit, again, is measured from finished exterior grade.
Yes, correct. Right now it's thirty-six and a half and the limit, and the planning co has an objective standard of thirty feet. Is that, is that not correct, Darcy?
Correct, yes.
There's an opportunity to bring it into conformance. I do see a pitched roof here that has at least three, four feet high. Maybe the architect can answer that question. Mr. McMahon?
I, I'm here. Can you hear me?
I can hear you just fine, sir.
We have, the original probably three submittals to the city of Millbrae were with a flat roof. And we were instructed that a flat roof would not be allowed in Millbrae. And we, so therefore added a four-and-twelve pitched roof with a standing seam metal roof. So it was upscale. And we were instructed by the planning commission that four-and-twelve was too steep and, not planning commission, sorry, planning staff, four-and-twelve was too steep and we had since lowered that to three-and-twelve and gotten rid of the standing seam metal roof and gone with a standard composition shingle roof. So yes, we have, we have explored all the options. And this is the, this is where we've been narrowed into with, by the city's requests.
Can you guys hear me?
We're, we're, public comment has been.
No.
Sienna, Sienna.
But can we go in order here, please?
Okay, all right, so.
I don't know if the architect was finished with his question.
I was answering a question. I don't have a question myself.
I don't know if you're finished. I'm sorry.
I am, thank you.
All right, Chris.
So my follow-up question, I just want to get a clarification here, Mr. McMahon. If you are able to have a roof system that you can design that would bring the building back into compliance at thirty feet, whether it's a pitched roof or a flat roof. If not a pitched roof, can a flat roof be made into compliance at thirty feet?
Well, unfortunately, you're, I think, going to put us in a catch-22 because what the committee, planning commission and what the city council are hearing are want two different things here. So it leaves us in a hard, a difficult place and of course costs my client tens of thousands of dollars in designing another house.
When I ask about the house, I'm just talking about the roof line and the height.
Well, you know, it's not that.
Wait, wait, one second here. Councilmember Fung, they were, they did already have the flat roof. They were recommended to do the pitch roof by our planning staff.
Instructed.
More consistent. I think Councilmember Fung's got an opinion there. I don't think the rest of the council will agree with. So to ask that at this point in time, I don't think.
They've, 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 this question has been brought up. Is that fair to say, Councilmember Fung? And, and they've, they've followed instructions.
Well, I think the question here is, we are being asked to grant an exception based on an objective standard that has been well documented at thirty feet. Now, it's, is it fair to say that, Darcy, was there any documentation that says flat roofs are not allowed in Millbrae?
No, it was the staff's recommendation as the architect communicated that to be compatible surrounding neighborhood.
Can you hear me?
Oliver, please.
Public comment is closed.
Please, let us have this discussion. Sorry, Darcy.
Thanks. So the staff does design review of new homes. That's why the design review permit is before you with the findings in the resolution. And one of the findings that's before you in that resolution is compatibility with the neighborhood. We look at the surrounding neighborhood roughly a block, a block and a half out. And we go out to the sites and we do.
No, no, no.
Oliver, I'm going to, I'm going to have to ask you to please mute yourself.
So our staff's analysis of the surrounding neighborhood and the predominant roof forms are pitched roofs and the predominant roof material is a traditional composition shingle. So the staff's recommendation prior to going to planning commission was to change the roof, as the architect mentioned, from a flat roof to a pitched roof and from a standing seam metal roof to a composition shingle roof. And that's a design that the planning commission reviewed and recommended approval of before you, which is before you tonight.
Councilmember Fung, did you have any other questions? Or at least not, I mean, I could come back to.
Sure.
Would you, you sure? Okay, let's go to Councilmember Schneider.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and to both the neighbors and the applicant, I know that this is horrible and I feel for all you, all of you. I will say when I talk to the neighbors that they were not anti-housing and my goal is to try to find a happy medium here where you can go forward with that. I did watch the planning commission and I had a couple of questions from the planning commission meeting that weren't addressed. And, and I will say I was kind of disappointed that the planning commission, it only had three of the five. And I always love hearing, especially from the two planning commissioners who were not there, they always bring up good compromises, which sadly was lacking that night at planning commission. So my main, a couple of questions. There was a discussion at planning commission about how to handle rainfall. I grew up in Meadows. We almost bought a house on Pinehurst Court, likely one of the ones that would have been taken out by the landslide. And I will tell you, I have a fear of landslides. And I will also say, I, and I actually talked to the city manager about the engineering studies and are the, and he feels really confident. And that's why I hope that the neighbors could meet and talk about the engineering studies and feel that there's a high degree of confidence in those studies. My one concern to staff is we are living in a new normal now. We are living in more dry periods that will collapse air spaces and soil, and then more rainy periods that then cause the rain to schlough off. And when, at the planning commission, there was a discussion of how to handle rainwater and I thought that the architect, and I could be wrong, said, well, no, it'll just drain out into the street. And I would like to hear if the architect and the applicant are open to trying to create some bio swales on the downside of your property, they could hang on to that water and let it slowly seep into the soil on there. And the city manager actually last night drew some patterns saying, well, maybe there's a possibility on that land. So I'm putting that question out there. You had a list of trees. Only one of them is a native tree. There is a new movement now in terms of trying to do fire prevention and to make our homes more fire resistant. And there's a whole set of trees now that are considered better for fires. And I don't know if those trees fit in that category or not. That would be my question to planning. We're in this time period where the applicants are going to feel like they're being held to account to new guidelines that are not yet coming out yet. I hear that. But I think we need to be planning for a climate reality and you are very close. You are actually in the wildland urban interface. So every tree project we do really should be considering the best trees to be fire resistant. I see the architect shaking your heads. I'll compare my degrees to your degrees at another time.
Councilmember Schneider?
That's okay. I'm going on with my questions. I'd like to get a question if the trees are better choices for fire resistant. The main concern I have on this project is what I have heard and I would love the applicant to actually talk about this because maybe I'm only hearing one side. Is it in your previous remodel, you made commitments to neighbors and then didn't live up to them? Now, that is not unusual in Millbrae. Sadly, it's happening in all the neighborhoods, but the city is trying to get people to be strict to their permits. So I just want, I'd love to hear your other side of that because if what they've told me is true, then we're going to have to keep a really good eye on you during construction because what was promised to them was not what happened and it cost them significant money. And it shouldn't have to. Your benefits should not cost them. Of all the variances you're being given, the thirty-two-foot one to me is the most understandable. And I definitely agree that a peaked roof is what we want. We want to try to have it blend in to the neighborhood. I actually, I'm not a modern fan liker, but I actually like your house. I think you did some really nice work there. But I think, I think that the neighbors have concerns about that slope. It has fallen down. If this work is going to weaken the slope and cause landslides, then I, voting for this project, am, are responsible. And again, something that came up last night, if the city manager could go over that, was how long, like the, the civil engineers, their liability period is for X decades, the contractor's liability is for Y decades. But what happens if that huge rain, the one that triggered the landslide in nineteen ninety-two or whenever? What happens when that happens? All the builders are gone and the residents are left without a home. So those are my questions on there. If you can make me feel comfortable, I'd love to see the neighbors and the new homeowner be able to go forward.
So can you, I, I'm sorry, did you want to get a question answered?
I did. I, yeah, I asked three or four questions. Do the trees fit within the fire reduction plan? Hold off for the resident right now? The resident and the history with committing, doing what he committed to do with the neighbors and/or what the judge or arbiter said to do. The trees, I've heard trees have already been removed prior to this coming to us. That makes me question how well this project will be managed. That makes me question how well this project will be managed and um I'm looking for my other one.
The bio filtration plant.
Oh, things to, I I believe that all of us, every person in Millbrae has a responsibility to try to keep rainwater on their property to the greatest degree possible. Because we're gonna be getting more flooding and more atmospheric rivers. So this is that chance to try to come up with a really clever bio swell, which could enhance that space. It could be a positive there. So those are my four.
I'm happy to answer the questions that have to do with the design thing. So if you uh let me know if you'd like me to do that.
How about if we start with Darcy and then?
Okay, yeah.
If you need, you're Jack, Chris.
I'll just, I thought it might be helpful if I shared the landscaping plan and just went over that really briefly. And then the architect can add any details about that. So there will be a significant amount of new landscaping um on the site and there'll be new trees. The trees include red maples and Japanese maples. And there's a monory pine that will be retained. It's an existing one. Those, from my knowledge, which is uh a little bit limited, um I'm not a landscape architect, but I can tell you that pines and bushy trees tend to be more flammable. And of course, the most flammable tree that I know of is the eucalyptus, right? So the trees that I see here are are not as bushy. They're not fir trees. They're not pines. Um they're not eucalyptus. They're using more decorative trees. So but I we can do more research with the licensed landscape architect to research this in more detail as we. And.
Darcy started to jump in here too, sorry. I I just think, because we we have a lot on the, and I do think, I think the question of the council member was about fire. And I think you see from this landscape plan that there's a lot of defensible space moved in or that is being designed into into the uh into the new landscaping. And I think it does uh have actually more fire protection and defensible space than than a lot of homes. So I don't think, in terms of fire danger, I don't think that that is is an issue with this site.
City manager, I would only tell you that Cal Fire is the one that's coming up with the list of preferred plans. And we should be looking at what Cal Fire is recommending.
Okay, so let's get the questions answered. And I think that one of the major questions for councilmember Schneider was about the security of a landslide. And none of us are engineers, but this is, can can somebody make a statement with the fact that this has all been very well engineered?
Yeah, Mayor, I I do know that this this is a question and have been a concern of of the surrounding neighbors. There was a geotechnical study that was done. It was very thorough. The city retained the firm of Cottonshires, which is is one of the top geotechnical engineering firms in the state of California, therefore the country. And we also have our chief building official uh is a licensed structural engineer. And so all of the reviews, as long as the plans are are designed pursuant to the geotechnical report, I would say that the slope actually has more stability.
Okay, Oliver, Oliver, you need to.
Really out of out of line here. So yes, we do have confidence, full confidence in the geotech. They're they're, both firms are licensed engineers. And we have complete confidence in those reports. When construction drawings, when the applicant comes in for construction drawings and building permit, the building permit will be reviewed, those construction drawings will be reviewed pursuant to those engineering studies. And we'll have to comply with them.
Thank you. Alright, I'm gonna move on to Vice Mayor Pepin.
Uh no, the applicant was gonna give his side of the story about not doing what he told the neighbors he was gonna do.
On another project?
Right up the street, right next door.
Yeah, so why don't we have that conversation offline for, that's not really relevant to?
Well, it does. It will affect my vote.
Okay, well, let's go to Vice Mayor Pepin first.
I think the applicant.
We'll let the applicant speak after you, Gina.
Yeah, I believe the applicant answered that question during the planning commission, because I too reviewed the planning commission. And it was resolved in court. So to bring it up separately at this point in time, and we can let the the applicant will respond to Ms. Schneider's concerns there. But the court resolved the matter and that was brought up, I believe, at the planning commission meeting. Secondarily, I agree with the planning commission, because they, I mean, it was a very detailed uh meeting here. The roof line uh that concerns my colleague, Mr. Fung, it's a minor adjustment here. But I do like this, the way the planning commission asked that it be done, because I think it's more consistent with the neighborhood here. It is residential property. The landowner has a right to build on residential property. The error that the council or someone made by having a teeny little section mismarked, the general plan has it as residential. So they have a right to build on this land. They are not obstructing anyone's view, as the planning commission clearly pointed out here. It's just a very difficult piece of property. So the variances that are given, I think, are minor. And and it would be done here. Eduardo, you're really gonna have to start muting people. Public hearing is closed.
Yeah, I I think that's a good idea. Uh we should be muting the public.
Sorry, council, sorry, Gina.
And I believe the planning commission also addressed councilmember Schneider's concern that the property is permeable and the landscaping, so it would, other than a bio swell, and the architect and the property owner can answer these questions more in detail. But that's what I heard on the planning commission. That the landscaping is, is that right? Is that, am I saying that right? Permeable? It it will absorb the water and not be complete runoff into the roadway there. And I believe that the property owner also has already put in some of the infrastructure, because the city was doing it. So they connected to one of our roadway or uh infrastructure improvements. Because we're going on here. So there's been a lot of work done here, but I think councilmember Schneider's questions can be answered. Eduardo, seriously.
Okay, how about, are we gonna go to councilmember Fung? Go go back to councilmember Fung now?
Uh okay, I, yeah, but I'd just like to say that, in my opinion, the planning commission did a really detailed job here. And I agree with them that the slanted roof is a better way to go here. It's a minor adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Mayor, before you go, if I could get an answer on the bio swell? Because that is not what I heard at the planning.
I'm happy to answer that, if you'd like. So uh in my discussion with the um uh the soils engineer, geotech, we talked about drainage. I almost always put in what you call bio swell. A lot of people call it reverse French drain. So if if you're not familiar with, French drain is what they do is uh they take in water. These distribute water over.
My house has a French drain. I'm well aware of what a French drain is.
So reverse, it it's it it sprinkles out underground, if you will. And we can, we are more than happy to do that. Uh and the more water we can keep on site and the uh to minimize the impact on the storm drainage system, the better. We have no problem with that whatsoever. But neither the client, uh the Panosis, or me, the architect, are soils engineers or hydrologists. So we can't make those decisions ourself, unfortunately. But I'm happy, I agree with you completely. We are happy to um put the maximum amount of however you want to do a permeability, uh making even the driveway more permeable. The driveway is, has a considerable amount of permeable permeable papers, as it is. But we will even uh uh look at making more of it. That's fine with me. It's a steep lot. We don't want a lot of water to um to run off and cause rivulets and and little gullies. It's bad for the landscaping as well. So I'm happy to, uh that, I don't know if that's answering your question or not, but yeah. So hopefully that alleviates, um I mean, I suppose it would be nice to have a hydrologist here, but we don't. So not that I'm aware of, anyway. So but I'm happy, what I do know about it, I'm happy to implement everything we can possibly do to get the goals that you want.
Okay, councilmember Fung, I promised I'd come back to you.
Thank you. May I already make my statement? Um I do believe that housing is important. You know, property right is important and then the property owner has a right to build. And but I do believe that, you know, we need to be very careful about granting these exceptions. And I do believe also that there is opportunity to bring this building height into conformance by tweaking the roof line. And but that's my comment. Thank you, Mayor.
I would agree with almost everything you said. Mostly the fact that uh the details have been very, looked at very closely in this project. And uh the roof or the height exception is not, doesn't seem to be the neighbor's problem. It's not obstructing anybody's views. So um the small exception, I would be pretty okay with. You know, I feel like uh councilmember Schneider, I mean, too bad the neighbors can't all get along, right? Because there's two sides to every story. But I but I don't see anything that the applicant did, um actually, going through the process, made all of the adjustments to fit into the parameters that we've set. And um with that being said, we haven't heard from councilmember Oliver, if you wanted to speak his piece of mind here.
Sure, happy to. Um thank you for everyone in the public who uh presented your opinion on this, whether through writing or at the meeting. You know, I remember back in two thousand when we had those floods slides along Larkspur. And actually, I was twelve years old at the time. I actually went out there with my mother and with several of the neighbors. Uh Mr. Maloney, who still lives there on Larkspur. And we went out and dug out um some of the culverts behind, along the hillside to prevent more flooding. So with that context, you know, and I I do appreciate that all of the geotechnical studies have been done. But I am a bit suspect about housing development on this site. Especially with all of the exemptions that have been given to this project, you know. I I'm actually really not concerned about the thirty-foot height, uh thirty-two foot versus thirty foot. I think the slanted roof is preferable to the um flat roof. But the three hundred and twelve percent FAR, where fifty-five is the maximum allowed. Usually when there's an exemption given, it's, you know, sixty percent instead of fifty-five, something like that. Also, the setbacks, having those setbacks on several of the sides of the building. You know, I know the planning commission went through this very thoroughly, but um I think I respectfully disagree with their opinion and how they voted on this. Um and that's my piece. Thank you.
So do we have a motion from our council to uh waive the first reading or and adopt the resolution approving the design review permit? Council.
Yeah, now I I think we need clarification here to councilmember Oliver's comments. Setbacks make a difference when you've got neighbors right next to you. There's no, there's no one here that.
Well, it's also about the design of the building, aesthetics of the building, right? You don't want just a flat wall.
But I think if you bring up the landscape, as you can see, um that that's taken care of there. Why don't we bring them up again um to see that? And I think the architect can help uh councilmember Oliver if he chooses to get further um discussion on that. Would that be okay? Wanted to bring up the the sides again.
Would you like me to show the landscape, this landscape plan or some other plans?
I think maybe the elevations, Darcy, or the section would be helpful.
Yeah, and I also think that this this illustration helps too, to show it. So these are the sections that show, again, a lot of the hill, a lot of the home terraced into the hillside.
Does, can the architect give some more explanation there?
If you tell me, if you're more specific with what the question is about uh.
He's concerned with the, he's concerned with the wall to the neighbors.
The walls?
He said setback was concerning.
Oh, um well, to be honest, I mean, I guess we could have that thing. The lot would be, if you did, Millbrae has a very unusual um methodology of doing the floor area ratio. And it's really, in my opinion, was probably originally written a long time ago for most of the flatter lots in the city. And that, but that's fine. And but in this case, when we did the calculations for how big the house we could do based exactly um what would be allowed with the slopes and so forth, I I came up with a four hundred square foot house maximum that would be allowed. So in all intents and purposes, the lot is, i- if you don't want to give any exemptions for the setbacks and the and the floor area ratio, then the lot is not buildable. And I suppose the council has that ability to do. I just wish they'd done it seven years ago. Um so um but I I hope, certainly hope they don't do that. But we have tried very, very hard to make this uh design very sensitive to the hill. It does not rise above the natural grade. It never rises above twenty-five feet above where the natural grade is. We have dug out in the sort of the inside, the house is L-shaped, sort of the inside of where the L is. And that's where the thirty-two feet was measured from. So that's actually way below where the grade is. It'd be like having a, digging out a sunken patio next to a um, next to a, you know, like a Midwest-style basement, daylight basement, and then measuring the house from the bottom of the basement. So i- in that case, I don't know if that answers you, but there are no flat walls that are uh square footage-wise. The vertical square footage of the flat uh of any wall that you do, any plane, P L A N E, is quite small compared to most houses I've ever designed. So nobody asks for volume of a house, but this house, compared to a typical two-story suburban-style house, this uh the above-ground volume is about sixty percent of what a typical uh above-ground house is. So visually, it's quite small.
Can I just ask our staff one more question? Are there any other recent examples of rezoning in Millbrae from open space to R1?
So I have a clarification on that again, I think. Sorry about the confusion on this. This is not a rezoning. It is um, the the general plan designation is for residential. And I understand, yes, that the map shows open space. But I think as as Community Development Director mentioned in her presentation, the zoning code must be consistent, internally consistent with the general plan. So as the general plan is adopted, I do believe all the research, and unfortunately, the city didn't have good documentation back, you know, a couple decades ago, that this was simply an oversight. And I think it was poor quality control when the city went from basically hand-drawn maps to GIS. And the GIS system from from everything that I can glean was really done over in engineering and probably a little bit of 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 lack of quality control, like I said. But I do think, and the reason why I believe that is because of the fact that the general plan was adopted with the residential designation. And and we've also um have found other discrepancies, minor discrepancies like this between the general plan and the actual zoning map when it was converted to uh to GIS. So um I hope that helps. That's why it's a zoning map amendment rather than a rezone. Um and it's that consistency with the general plan that is that is key here under California state.
Yeah, i- if I can just add that a a general plan is like your constitution. And your zoning legislation is to be consistent with your constitution. So I think based on what I have learned is this was a mistake. This was an error, uh and we really are kind of correcting the record, because we can't have a zoning uh law that overrides the general plan. So we really are correcting. Uh of course, you're in the process of, you know, looking at your general plan now to update it. But we must. But we must now be consistent with what our general plan says, the general plan that's in effect now.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Schneider? You're on mute.
Thank you, Mayor. Um I believe that part of the developer fees, City Manager and I talked about this. There's a perception of a loss of open space. I really appreciate the explanation you just gave City Manager because it really says that we, or at least me as this elected official, needs to work and make sure that we're following the rules. And that it should have been done back then. So really, we have to do it tonight, but it really isn't. It isn't really a loss of open space that was done back when that general plan was written. But City Manager, help me with this because this neighborhood, granted, there is Meadows Park just down the hill. But I will tell you, if you live up on the hill, you don't walk down that hill too often because you gotta walk back up it, and we have no bus service. Um if some of the fees that the the applicant is paying in park fees, could there be something that would happen up on the top of the hill that would be a benefit to the neighbors? Did I get that wrong? It was really late when we talked last night.
Well, you well, you know, we can look at it with development impact fees when we collect those for capital improvements, right? It it's to accommodate the new population, right? And and that's where the fees on a ratio on a on a per-unit basis is 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 how those fees are calculated. So those fees will go to contribute to new parks, new um recreation spaces to accommodate new population. So this one single-family home in essence pays its fair share for its impact on the new population. And so when we spend that money, it's consistent with our parking recreation uh master plan or our parks element in the general plan. And so that's how all of this flows. So this park impact fee would go to contribute then to a a expanded project, expanded park, expanded facility uh to accommodate um what would be consistent within our open space element, our recreation element, uh and our parking recreation master plan. So instead of just flopping a park somewhere up there, if it's not consistent with our general plan, we would not do that. We would be consistent with our general plan.
I hear you. Just the local recreation, we didn't get the bike pedestrian grant, which would have made it safer along Skyline Boulevard. If there's something we can do, um I was not aware that there were trails up in that area, and I grew up there. But again, I lived at the top of Helen. So you tend to, I used Inipasara Park. Would love to see the neighbors find an advantage or a benefit from I I think my gut feeling is they're reacting more to some things that happened badly in the past. And if we could fix that, we could and and this would be fine. And as I said, I I would love this neighborhood to come together. And it looks like what you said definitely tells me how I have to vote on the zoning issue. I'm still trying to figure out how to make the neighborhood a neighborhood.
Well, and I and I will say, if I may, real quick um to follow up on the second question that that Councilmember Holliver had. I watched the planning commission meeting as well, and right before this item, the planning commission approved a home that was, how large, Darcy? It had a six thousand, it had a six thousand square foot basement. So in terms of volume and consistency, um that was another action just just for the council's benefit here that the planning commission acted upon. The only reason why this is before the city council uh is because of this uh map amendment, which honestly is just a housekeeping item. But but the way the law works is it's a de novo hearing and and all things before the council. But there was a a six thousand square foot basement plus plus the home. So in terms of volume and square footage, I would say that this home is consistent with the actions of of the planning commission uh here recently.
So City Manager.
That home, that home complied with all of the, I think there was one exception, but that home complied because we don't count basement volume uh in the FAR.
City Manager, given the concern over what has happened in the past, can you explain how um permit checks, how all of that can be done to make sure that this house would be built and that that big retaining wall isn't going to cut the base rock weakening the houses above? How how are we going to make sure that this hill doesn't fall or the houses on top don't fall because of something that happened? I know we've got the engineering studies and and I'm not an engineer, but I do have experience cleaning up landslides. Because I come in at the end after the problems happen. That's my career.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I could say there is is we do have two licensed engineers that have both done studies or one one peer reviewed the study. Um they both concluded that the way the home is designed that uh it will um sufficiently stabilize the slope and there will not be any issues. As I also mentioned, we, our chief building official is a licensed structural engineer. Um our uh building staff, plan check engineers will review the construction documents. Meaning the plans, when once an entitlement is approved, right, an applicant doesn't spend money on the plans that that the architect and engineer have to prepare to actually build the the building. Once that occurs, they submit it to the building and our our qualified staff and other licensed engineers will be reviewing those plans to make sure it's consistent with the uh with the geotechnical analysis.
I think it's not as much the plans, it's during the actual construction, I think. And the finishing and the punch list or whatever we want to call it. It's will this actually be what happens and will it cause detrimental harm to the adjacent neighbors?
Yeah, and and I will also say, you know, the California Building Code is the most restrictive in the world um in California because it has been amended and it's amended about once every um three years. And it just strengthens the seismic requirements um and soils conditions that that are allowed or or that are governed in the building code. And so the building code itself in California um helps protect these types of of situations. You know, um the geotechnical report is something that is, I don't want to say above and beyond, it's quite necessary. But for a single-family home, um it it's it's been thoroughly analyzed. And and not only that report, but like I said, the building code uh here governs in in not only the final construction, but during construction, there are all sorts of regulations for slope stability that have to occur during the construction process.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
We haven't heard from the applicant. Do you want to give them an opportunity?
Sure. Yeah, because they just raised their hand. That's why I was going to call on them after you.
Okay.
Billy and Jessica?
Uh good evening, everybody. How are you tonight?
Hello.
Uh it's been a very interesting evening uh hearing all the commentary from the neighbors. And um, you know, trying to take in everything that that we're both hearing tonight. Uh I'm a little besides myself. Um and Schneider, I know you wanted to hear the other side of the story with my neighbor um uh Lily, uh Lily Chen, who claims to be the wife of William. However, when she was introduced to me twelve years ago by William, uh she was introduced as the daughter. Um and um, you know, when we bought this house thirteen years ago, uh my wife and I wanted to basically rebuild the property and make a brand-new home for ourselves and our future family. We now have three kids. Um and I had a great relationship with her father, William. He was a great man uh during construction. He was sending me photos while I was on vacation, uh progress pictures of the house uh saying, Billy, you know, here's the progress report. I mean, he was a wonderful, wonderful man. And he and I had a great relationship. And um, you know, after we constructed the house, um I I I started on the left side of my house. Uh I wanted to start doing the landscaping and I spoke to John, John Hippley. And I asked if he'd be willing to share the cost of, you know, adding a retaining wall uh and a new fence. Uh this way, instead of having a hill on the sides of our house, we would actually be able to accomplish having a flat uh a a flat concrete slab. And and John was happy to move forward on that on that suggestion, and he pitched in half, half the money, the cost for that. Uh we did a beautiful, you know, concrete retaining wall. Um I put, we put French drain on both sides of the wall so that any water coming down from his property was basically captured and then spit out. Uh half of it was spit out to the sidewalk, the other half would go to the rear of the house and then all the way down uh to Larkspur um via these corrugated pipes that the city had installed years ago. Um so shortly after that wall was completed, we did the backside of the house. And then it came time to do the the fence that was shared between myself and and William Chen. And I asked William, I said, William, you know, look what we just did on the other side, and he saw what we did. He was so impressed with all the concrete work and the quality of construction that was going on. Um he said, Billy, I I I don't have, I don't have the money to share the cost with you. And uh and I said, William, I go, that is totally fine. I I'm happy to build this at my own expense. And um and I just need the okay from you to go ahead and go forward. I go, but to keep costs down, um you know, we would like to basically remove the old fence, which he had installed twenty years prior. And uh we can bring in a a Bobcat to basically dig dig out the um the area where the new concrete wall was going to go uh instead of having manual labor, because manual labor would have cost me double the money, and since we weren't sharing the cost, um he agreed to allow me to bring a Bobcat in. So we went ahead, we brought the Bobcat in. He he basically oversaw the whole project. He saw every second of it, and he just kept telling me, Billy, thank you so much. He goes, because the last thirty years, me living here, he goes, because I've got a slope on the side of my house, all the water was falling on my house, causing dry rot. And I said, well, William, I'm 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 happy I I can help out here, and I'm happy to do this because I'm doing it for my property. So any water that's captured on my property will basically be spit out to the sidewalk and to the rear of the house. It basically gets divided. So then he liked that so much that he ended up hiring my landscaper to install a flat pad on his side with more French drainage. And um and uh and and then, and and the funny thing is, and that Lily was nowhere to be seen. She claims to be William's wife right now. However, all my communication was with William. And Lily did not surface until a year and a half later and hired a a surveyor to do uh the property line. And then once she did that, uh they discovered that that the that the that the that the that the fence was encroaching on their property. However, I have photos. And we put the retaining wall and the new fence in the identical location where her father installed it twenty years ago. Uh and to prove that we did that, yeah, to prove that we did that.
Billy.
Yes.
I don't want to interrupt, but I I just, I want to follow the rules here with everybody. I appreciate the details. But I'm going to ask you to wrap it up in the next thirty seconds or so.
I just don't want Ann to think that we're bad neighbors. We are.
No, no, no. I I think she can pick up the phone too if you if you need her to.
Oh, yeah, I'm I'm happy to have a conversation, Ann. Yeah, I just, you know, there's always two sides to a story. And uh i- it's been very difficult living next to to Lily. Lily's been very, very difficult and angry and and just just not a good neighbor.
Thank you. I appreciate you being considerate of our time. I mean, I know this is a difficult situation for everybody.
It really is, yes.
Counsel? Is everybody satisfied with what they heard or have enough information to go forward for somebody to make a motion? Um. I'll make, oh, okay.
Go ahead, Mayor.
I I'm going to make a motion uh for uh to waive the first reading and introduce an ordinance for proposed zoning map amendment. And I'm also going to include item B for the approval of nine ninety Larkspur Drive Single Family Resident Project.
A second.
Elaine, could you please call for the vote?
Councilmember Snyder?
Let's make sure. I hate having to go first. I'm really torn, and I usually don't take the chicken way out. Um I would love to vote yes for the zoning change because we should, um but I think I'm going to abstain. I'm just afraid of the slope.
Just for the record, it's not a zoning change, it's a map, a zoning map amendment.
Zoning map.
Rezoning.
It's a correction.
Okay, I would love to vote yes for the correction, but I would, I just feel like I need more knowledge of what's really going to happen to that mountainside. Sorry.
Councilmember Holliver?
Um yeah, these were two separate items. I would vote um yes on five and eight, but since it's not, I'm voting no.
Councilmember Fung?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. What was, what was Councilmember Holliver saying?
These were two separate items. Uh I would support the first one, but since it's not, uh, no.
So you vote yes on nine A, but no on nine B?
There was one motion made for both A and B.
May I remind you, may I remind you that you wanted to put them together from the beginning?
For discussion purposes.
Councilmember Fung?
Okay, so um I would vote yes on nine A. I think it is the right thing to do. Uh for nine B, uh I would be far more comfortable if we could modify the roof line to bring it more into compliance.
That's not the motion, Councilmember Fung.
I understand, I understand.
So one vote, please.
Uh so I I would abstain from nine B.
Okay.
All right. Um Vice Mayor Papen?
Uh well, appears the motion fails, but I'm going to vote yes, and I concern my colleagues with the matter of certain laws here. Maybe we should get some legal opinions in here. So I vote yes.
Okay. And Mayor Aliva, even?
I vote yes. And I'm not so sure, I mean, how, uh when people abstain, doesn't doesn't the abstention go with the majority of the votes?
Under Roberts' rules, it would, uh, oh, boy, I.
It goes with the majority of the votes.
It goes with the.
That would pass, that would pass this motion.
Hey, then it passes.
No, I would change my vote to a no.
But you, uh that was not my understanding. An abstention is an abstention, making it two, two two dash three. I I I don't know if you can withdraw your vote after we've casted all the votes. I I.
They can have a motion to reconsider.
I approve. I I second.
But we're still ruling on the first motion.
I want to know, let's look up Roberts' rules and and see where we are.
Can you give me a few minutes?
Absolutely.
Why don't we take a five-minute break? Let's take a break. Thank you.
Thank you.
Own protocols say that an abstention. Yeah. Yeah. You're, you're coming through my computer. Oh. Oh. Hold on, let me go outside. All right.
I want to remind everyone, this is still live broadcast. And if you would like to speak, you can unmute yourself. But however, this is a live broadcast and being recorded.
Is everybody on? Is our counsel on?
Mayor, it looks like all the counsel is present.
Okay, two, two separate issues here, or three separate issues here. First, once, once a vote is, is casted and results are reported, we cannot make, we cannot change our vote. Secondly, is Roberts' rules is, I was correct, not that it matters. But abstentions in Roberts' rules go with the winning vote. Although, our protocols in Millbrae are different.
Exactly.
So the protocol allows for an abstention to be just that. A no, a vote, a non-casted vote.
Yes, section, yeah. Section Romanural 3, item 13, in our own Millbrae Council protocols, does allow abstentions. And it states that abstention doesn't count for or against a matter.
So we are different than Roberts.
Yes, to that extent.
And with that being said, we don't, we don't have, the vote fails. So what I, what I'd like to do at this time with the permission of the counsel is I'd like to take the, the item A separately and make a motion to pass, a motion to approve, waive the first reading.
Second.
And can we call for that vote, please?
Councilmember Snyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Holber?
Hi.
Councilmember Fung?
Yes, on 9A.
Okay. Vice Mayor Pappen?
Yes.
Mayor Aliva?
Yes.
All right. We've, the city council waived the first reading and introduced the ordinance for the proposed zoning map amendment pursuant to Millbrae Municipal Code Title 10, Planning and Zoning Article 28 Amendments for 998 Larkspur Drive to change the zoning map from Open Space District to the Single Family Home Residence Zoning District by the vote of 5 to 0.
So with item B, with, without coming to conclusion here what the vote might end up at, I think we could all probably take a pretty educated guess. I, I was wondering if, if we could actually, if I could, if I can make a motion to send it back to planning for some sort of review again? Or maybe some sort of taking, taking forward what comments? Yes, Vice Mayor.
I think by, I think there we are required to make a finding for denial. So that the applicant, whatever the, you're instructing then, the Planning Commission, if you send it back. But I mean, you have to.
So you want to, so make a motion, go through the, the formalities of a vote?
Well, I, I, I'm not sure. I, I'm not, this is, but if you, if the council did not, if we do the vote and we deny it, then I think the council members have to be specific as to why. If, you know, Councilmember Fung is concerned about the roof, it doesn't appear that, that the votes exist for that change. If the other council members, Councilmember Schneider is concerned about the slope, I think the Planning Commission dealt with that, but we can ask for clarification on that. And I'm not sure, I mean, you, you just have to give them instructions because I do believe the applicant has been through this for several years. So I don't know. Can we get clarification from counsel?
Vice Mayor, I think I'm saying the same thing as you. But I don't, do we need a formality on this? Do we need to actually take a vote with the, why, why they would reject or why would we accept?
Well, Mayor, if, if I may, I, I think there's two different discussions. One is if it's a denial, the other is, I think, Mayor, not to put words in your mouth, but you are going to say, let's send it back to planning for some additional review. Continue the item and get some feedback to see what we can work out. Perhaps it's the step backs of the second story and third story. More information provided the city council on the geotech analysis. Maybe we bring the geotech engineer to the meeting. And they can, you know, speak for themselves. I, I actually had recommended that, that the geotech be here. And I think that would be helpful.
That, that was going to be my recommendation. So whatever, whatever gets us to another meeting with these folks is good.
No, I, I, it's been a long time since we have had a disputed level on a planning commission matter. I believe that you have 45 days to take an action on this. So you, you do have time at the council level. If you would like to take up the suggestion of your city manager to continue the matter and have more information brought to you.
I think we need to be specific as to the information requested.
Well, then let's simply do this in the essence of time. Let's call a motion to approve and adopt the resolution. Vice Mayor, if you second that, we'll go with a vote and a reason that Darty can take to planning.
Well, I'm wondering.
If, if I may, the planning commission did not, this is not an appeal. And I think the planning commission made a recommendation so that the planning commission, this was a recommendation to the city council. So that was the action. It wasn't an action to approve or deny the project.
Yeah, 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 I'm sorry.
And so what I, what I would recommend, if, if I may, this is a complex project. A lot of constraints on the site. My recommendation is to send it back to planning. Let's work with the architect and the property owner. Let's bring it back to the city council with some design changes that, that could be supportive.
Again, I don't think we have the, I, I, I think the majority of the council disagrees with Councilmember Fung on the roof thing. I mean, let's be specific here before wasting planning commission time and everybody else's.
If, if I may, and city attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, this will not go back to the planning commission. If the council directs a continuation to go back and work with staff, we bring it right back to the city council.
But what are they going to do with it? What, what are they going to, what is staff going to do with it?
Through the mayor, through, through the mayor.
I, I think, Mayor, to answer your question, we, we can bring the experts in on the geotech and they can address the issues. And then I believe if we do get direction, what, what I heard on my notes is that the, there was some concern about the, the wall massing and the setbacks in terms of the second and third story. So maybe we can work with the design team to step back the second and third story a little bit more. And then we would actually eliminate that need for variance. And then if the direction is to work on the roof line and bring the home down to where there's not a height variance, we can, we can work with that as well.
With all due respect, city manager, I didn't hear all that stuff from counsel. I, I, I heard the roof line and that would have lost and.
Yeah, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but I mean, I, I mean, Mr. Holber, am I incorrect with, with your statement about?
I would, I would just generally. I would just generally say the exemptions, the variances that were granted, I believe were too generous.
I, I really think we have to be more specific here. It's been going on forever here.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
If I can. When, when I first watched a planning commission meeting, I contacted the city manager saying that I haven't had the time to dive into the, the engineering, the geology. That is my greatest concern. So if there was a reason for denial, it's that this area has had a landslide, it has taken out houses. And if I'm going to vote for it, I want to be really sure. Sadly, council meetings or planning commission meetings aren't the best way to allow the neighbors and council members and planning commissioners and staff to dive into the details that would make me more comfortable voting on this. So I, I appreciate the mayor and bringing it back. I would love to see this come back. I just want to know, or more time, or to sit down, as city manager said, with the technical, what was technical, you used the term, Tom, whatever that is, I would appreciate that. Because if that house falls or the houses above it fall, it's on me. And I want to make sure I'm making a well-informed decision on a very steep slope that I actually also think is precedent in Millbrae. If.
Again, if that's, if that's concerned, I would recommend.
Is that a motion to continue this, Councilmember?
I'm happy to make a motion to continue if that's what you need, Mayor.
Yes, please.
And Mayor, if I may, as I understand the direction from the council member is that she would like to meet with a geotechnical engineer for discussion and, and further information and questions that she has to the engineer that convinces her that the engineering is solid and accurate on the project.
Tom, I would only add that I think it would be helpful to have the residents there too, because I think if we can provide enough information, and I know that would be difficult, but if it's my time, I'm happy to share that time so that they can hear and see the engineering that you're comfortable with, that I'm not there yet.
Yeah, I, I will, I, yeah, I, I agree with that. I, I think that we can certainly get the expert in the room if the council so directs.
Yeah, actually, I mean, the variance that, that Councilman Holber brought up, the 300 plus percent seemed pretty large, but the house is buried in the hillside. I, I actually like the house, but I also don't want to see hillsides fall down.
So can I just get clarification from Councilmember Schneider? I, I would agree to continue this. I just, I am concerned, none of us are licensed experts in this. And I'm hoping the licensed experts will ease your concerns here. But are you suggesting that they, after you hear from the experts, that all the neighbors would have to sign off on that as well? I mean, we're, I, I don't know that we are in a position to contact experts.
No, I'm not saying that. I do think the city should look at its process for getting neighborhoods to, to learn about projects on that. I think that's a continuous improvement for the future. But in this case, that's why I'm happy to share my time with the, the neighbors so that we can do a deep dive into the engineering and try to, it's their homes on the line. It's their homes that would fall down the hill. So that's what I'm worried about.
Yeah, so, but I, I, you know, I have no, I, I, again, I understand your concern there and I think you should be meeting with the experts there. And then you can talk to the neighbors thereafter, but they, I mean, we, I think under the law, need to, you know, hear from the experts and stuff. And as the city manager pointed out here, the strict nature of state laws and stuff. So I, I would support the continuation based on your obtaining the knowledge necessary to be comfortable.
And given that it sounds like Councilman Holber, who also went through the experience at the time, going, even, even if he wasn't there when the hill came down, but going to help clean up, adds to your life experience. So, you know, Councilman Holber, very welcome to join.
Yeah, and I will note that my father obtained the funding to reinforce the hill. So we are not, as I understand it, that part of the hill is different than the other parts. So let's, let's do that and move ahead and get the information you need to be comfortable. So continuing for that part, I think would be helpful. Madam Mayor?
Yes, I made that, I already seconded.
I don't know if we need a. Yeah, let's have a roll call.
I think, when do roll call vote or just directions?
No, let's, let's, let's continue this, please.
Okay.
So it's to continue the item and bring it back to the council?
Yes.
Point of clarification, I'll look to the city attorney. Is there a date certain, city attorney that?
Well, typically you continue to the next, to the next meeting. Unless.
In 14?
You direct otherwise.
I'd be somewhat beholden on the ability to get the geotech, geotechnical engineers in a meeting. Even, and I would prefer actually being in person than doing it via Zoom where we can flip back and forth. Some of this stuff is just hard to do in Zoom and technical is hard.
I'm, I'm going to note here that our next scheduled meeting is on Election Day and we don't have them on Election Day. So it would be a slightly different date. And hopefully. I think it's June 14th is our next. Okay, great. I think we're okay. Call for the question. All right.
Oh, for the vote, please.
That's the same thing. Go ahead.
Councilmember Snyder?
Hi.
Councilmember Holber?
Hi.
Councilmember Fung?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Pappen?
Hi.
Mayor Aliva?
I really want to abstain, but I'll say aye.
City council continued the resolution to June 14th city council meeting, allowing more information on geotech as requested by council.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your expertise in getting us through that. And we will finish it on the 14th. We're going to go to existing business. May I remind council that is 9:30? And we have a lot of items, six items left to go. So we're going to go straight to item number 10, to adopt a resolution of necessity declaring a portion of certain property interests as necessary for public purposes and authorizing initiative and condemnation proceeding for the acquisition of the property rights to extend California Drive and for overhead utilities. And this is an action item, council.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Tom Williams, again, city manager. We also have our, our legal team here from Gold, Farben, Lippman, in case the council has any questions on the legal process. So this evening, we do have a resolution of necessity to initiate condemnation proceedings for the acquisition of property that's necessary for the California Drive extension. It's consistent with the Millbrae Stationery Specific Plan. that's necessary for the California Drive extension that's consistent with the Millbrae Stationery specific plan. The portion of the property is known as APN 093-352-020. I will also state for the record that the Hanson Bridget Farm does have a conflict of interest on this, and so our city attorney, Ms. Joan Casman, will be recusing herself for this particular item. And that's why we do have alternative counsel of Goldfarb and Lippman. Next slide, please. So just to put things in perspective, the California Drive realignment and extension was identified as a vital circulation element in Millbrae Stationery specific plan. It was originally approved in 1998, and it was confirmed in 2016 when the MSASP was amended by the, by the city. California Drive is necessary to allow the critical approved housing project known as TOD1. It's 488 housing units and 74 affordable housing units. And the approved Millbrae Sarah Station, known as TOD1, that was approved for the 488 housing units is conditioned to construct California Drive. The precise alignment defines the entire length of California Drive from El Camino and that creates a four-way intersection with La Cruz, south to Irwin Place. And this is fully consistent with the Millbrae Stationery specific plan in terms of transit and transit access requirements. Next slide. So this is a, this is a 1998 plan that was adopted by the city. You can see here California Drive, where my cursor is, just to the left of this shaded yellow gold area. So this was always a California Drive realignment and extension. As you get through the gold area, then it goes up, which, which is to the west to align with, with El Camino Real. The parcel in question this evening is highlighted here in gold, and you can see how, how this parcel is necessary for the extension of California Drive to get access to the approved housing units. Next slide, please. This is the 2016 plan, the precise alignment for the specific plan area. You can see that this is consistent with the 1998 approved plan in terms of circulation. I've shown again the parcel here in yellow that the city is pursuing. And this is the remaining parcel necessary for the California Drive improvement and access to the housing. Next slide, please. This shows in a color photo here now, the BART station is there to the top. It's highlighted there with the cursor. California Drive pursuant again to the 98 plan, the 2016 plan and the adopted precise alignment is shown here in white. The purple area is all owned by the city of Millbrae. Title was transferred from BART recently to the city of Millbrae for this portion of the construction of California Drive. The yellow area that is highlighted, we also negotiated with BART for the acquisition of that parcel. We do have an irrevocable easement across the yellow area, again, for the extension of California Drive for the plant. And that leads us to this yellow gold area titled remaining parcel. This is the parcel that we are seeking. And again, you can see how necessary it is to, for the construction and improvement of California Drive. And here where my cursor is, this is where it turns 90 degrees and then goes back west, which is down on this aerial photo to connect with, with El Camino. I will hand it over to Mr. Harry Burrows, our acting city engineer, to go into a little bit more technical details. But I would like just to make a few comments here. And that the proposed resolution of necessity has been prepared in accordance with the Code of Civil Procedure, Section 1245.210, including Section 1245.230. And the resolution declares that the city makes the findings required by eminent domain law and specifically by Section 1245.230 of the Code of Civil Procedure. And that the public interest and necessity requires that the city exercises its right and powers of eminent domain authority over the property rights in order to accomplish the project. And the proposed resolution of necessity further declares that the project is a more necessary public use than the use proposed by California High Speed Rail or the Joint Powers Board that operates Caltrain. And that any presumption in favor of those entities use under state law is rebutted by the project's more necessary public use of extended California Drive that will enable the construction of the 488 approved housing units. And 67 of which, well, the 440, 40, 67 of which are affordable. The applicant on the approved project does have the right to go to 888 housing units at their discretion. And if that's the case, it would raise the affordable housing up to 73 affordable housing units. The governor of the state of California has declared a housing emergency. Originally, it was through 2025. The governor extended that housing emergency through 2030. I also like to say that to the extent that Caltrain contends that the property must remain in its possession so that California High Speed Rail remains obligated to fund its electrification project under the December 5, 2018 Standards Agreement between those two parties. Section 8.3 of the agreement, the funding contingency clause clearly states and provides that California High Speed Rail may simply walk away with no further liability if it is not able to fund the electrification obligations, whether due to lack of state, of federal funding, government inaction, or court work. And that section further provides that California High Speed Rail may reduce the scope of work to reflect any reduction in funds. So with that, mayor, I'd like to hand it over again to Mr. Harry Burrows, our acting city engineer, to go through the adopted precise alignment and other technical aspects of California Drive.
Thank you, Tom. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Again, my name is Harry Burrows, and I'm the city's project manager for TOD projects and also acting as city engineer. So just real briefly, what this exhibit shows is, as Tom described, the precise alignment that was previously adopted by the city council for California Drive, which is shown here, where the cursor is following. And what the detail is on this drawing is all of the transit serving facilities that were negotiated with BART. I believe in conjunction with SAM Trans and Caltrain as part of the agreements that Tom mentioned earlier that returned the BART parcels in fee and some of the surface rights back to the city, which is consistent with those previous exhibits. So I'm not going to go into all of the details here, but just as an overview, it's, you know, passenger loading, ADA loading, bus loading areas, you know, places for taxis and ride shares and other things, fully accommodated within the California Drive alignment here. And then this slide is just essentially a recap of what Tom mentioned earlier, but this just shows the underlying approved Millbrae Sarah Station or TOD number one project with California Drive on the east side of it. And as Tom mentioned, all of these parcels that are necessary for the construction of California Drive have been acquired with the exception of this remaining parcel, which is the topic of the item tonight. And so with this, you know, just the staff's recommendation is for city council to adopt the resolution of necessity. I won't read it in its entirety, but, you know, we're happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Harry. Councilmember Schneider?
Thank you, mayor. City manager has, have the transportation, do we have correspondence from the transportation agencies saying that they support the creation and extension of California Drive?
So if I understand the question correctly, well, we have, we have two pieces of correspondence. One is a recent correspondence that we've received that is in the record that was sent to the council for this item this evening. But over the period of time, when, when the city adopted the specific plan, at that time, there is correspondence we received early on around 2003 that, that Caltrain would support and did support the extension of California Drive and the alignment and station access pursuant to the, to the adopted Millbrae Stationery specific plan.
Thank you. Yes, I do believe I have a copy of that letter, and it was definitely before. It was definitely quite a while ago. Thank you.
Vice Mayor? Move approval.
Second.
I was gonna look for a public comment first. But thank you. We'll have, we have a motion in a second on the, on the table here.
Well, I do think you need to take public comment.
Yes.
All right, mayor. Mayor, if I could state for record, the city staff did receive three pieces of correspondence that was shared with the city council by email.
Thank you. Okay, let's start with former mayor Janet Fordy. Janet? Janet, are you there?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Oliva. I would like to urge the council to support this resolution, adopting the resolution of necessity. I think the council should focus on what is the more necessary public use and how likely is it that these uses will actually come to fruition? The more necessary public use, as the city manager has, has told you, is that there are 488 housing units at risk here. 488 housing units, which are two-thirds of the city's approved housing units in order to meet our state requirements for providing housing here in Millbrae. These projects are not speculative. The extension of California Drive is necessary for the traffic circulation pattern for the most congested intersection in the city and perhaps in the whole peninsula. We need the, the extension for traffic circulation around the multimodal station. But we also need this extension of California Drive to serve the 488 housing units to be built here. The high-speed rail project is speculative. There is no funding source for it at the present time. There is no assured funding source. I've been a proponent of the rail system of transportation in general for a very long time. In 1980, when I was chairman of the Board of SAM Trans, it's my signature that's on the contract that created the three-county Caltrain authority that became the Joint Powers Board. But this has to be done responsibly. It has to be something that works with the community. The community has built its general plan, its specific area plan around the extension of California Drive. The city needs to support that. It's part of our city's constitution, our city's general plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Looks like, oh, we have one other hand. Gail Connor?
Yes, thank you. My name is Gail Connor. I'm the attorney for the Peninsula Corridor Joint Power Board, the JPB, which along with its member SAM Trans is the key owner of the subject property. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review my letter that was included in the packet. I won't reiterate what's in there, but I did want to address an issue that was raised in the staff report, the written staff report that was also included in the package. The staff report actually suggested that the subject property is sitting vacant with no concrete plans for it to use. And I think that is a mischaracterization. And it's an important characterization because under the law, if it is devoted to a public use, then there are certain findings in connection with your own necessary public use and the presumptions in favor of state use and regional use as opposed to a city use. But if we go back to the history of this property, this property was conveyed along with several other parcels by SAM Trans, the JPB, to BART in connection with the construction of the BART extension to SFO and Millbrae. Now, there was, there were a series of agreements that had this property, along with some other properties, coming back to the JPB at a later time, and at the same time that the city got its property back. And in fact, the property was reconveyed last year pursuant to the terms of a real property transfer and exchange agreement that was dated 2021, but was based on a prior use operating and maintenance agreement. So the property came back last year, but the question is, for what purpose was it reconveyed? Well, my letter explains how since the early 2000s, the JPB and High Speed Rail have been working together to design a system that allows both trains to operate on the independent corridor within the JPB's existing right-of-way, so-called blended system. Now, one of the elements of the blended system involves electrification of Caltrain's existing system. My letter lays out the agreement for funding of that by, by High Speed Rail. And in fact, that funding has come through to date. The JPB has received $715 million from High Speed Rail for electrification component of the blended system, and High Speed Rail has been granted an easement over this property for its system. Now, the, the subject property will be used for crackage, a platform, and a pole for the power line certification, clearly not compatible with the city street. Loss of that land would not only impact Caltrain's operations in Millbrae, but also create operational problems both north and south of the city. Since Caltrain serves the entire peninsula, if you create a choke point at one point.
Gail, I'm sorry. I apologize, but we have to stay on course here. We have a couple other speakers. Greg, you're up next. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. I am Greg Bergman. Good evening, all. Thank you. I represent SAM Trans. We, SAM Trans has joined in and agrees with Caltrans' position as set forth by Mr. Gail in his filings with the city council, which we also joined in. I would like to, once I've, since it's clear that SAM Trans agrees with Caltrain, I would like to allocate the rest of my time to Mr. Steve Silva, who also wishes to speak.
Go ahead, Steve. You can finish up this time and have, so you basically have five minutes, please.
Five minutes. Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Steve Silva. I'm an attorney representing the California High Speed Rail Authority. I'd first like to confirm that we sent in a letter as part of the record, and I'm not just going to repeat the, the letter to you all. I would like to focus on a few things in the staff report and the agenda report that I think bears some noting. First, I'd like to say that the authority likes partnering with the city. We're, we've been in constant communication with the city for a number of years, and we're excited to continue our good relationship with the city. Unfortunately, this particular road acquisition imperils the authority's use of this property. The staff report basically says that its concern is that High Speed Rail might not happen. That's a pretty common refrain for large-scale infrastructure projects. January of 1966, the San Francisco Chronicle said, hey, Bay Area $1 billion rapid transit fantasy, warning that BART might exhaust all of its funds before it ever sent a train from San Francisco to the East Bay. The staff report indicates that maybe the reasonable amount of time to deploy for use should be the seven-year mark that is outlined in California Code of Civil Procedure 1240.220. That's actually the wrong standard. That's the standard you use if you're going to condemn somebody else's property. We are the people facing condemnation. Instead, to support a more necessary public use, two things have to be found. First, that the public use is actually more necessary, and second, that it will be deployed in a reasonable amount of time. I bring this up because a reasonable amount of time for a large statewide infrastructure project isn't measured in seven years. It can be measured in decades. The I-105 freeway in Southern California was designed in the 60s, litigated in the 70s, built in the 80s, and then finally opened in the 90s. BART took years to be allocated. Here in Millbrae, there was planning for the BART extension beginning in the 1970s. It did not open a local station until 2003. Caltrain's electrical system is planned back in 1992, and ground isn't broken until 2017. So I want to highlight that the standard here of assessing whether the use will actually be deployed is not measured in the seven-year mark that's indicated in the agenda item. And the agenda report actually concedes as much. They acknowledge that this is an analogy. So there's no misstatement of the law, but it is a misapplication of an. So there's no misstatement of the law, but it is a misapplication of an inappropriate standard. The second thing that I'd like to focus on is the fact that high-speed rail isn't a speculative use in the future. It is happening now. The rail cars aren't traveling right now, that's for sure, but high-speed rail is happening now. The, this area is a blended use between Caltrain and high-speed rail. In two thousand and seventeen, there was groundbreaking and start of construction for the electrification project. That's already happened. In two thousand and nineteen, the preferred alternative for the environmental process was identified for the San Francisco to San Jose section. In two thousand and twenty, the draft environmental report was published. The agenda report indicates that the final environmental will be done sometime later this year with, with no real dates indicated. It should be published on June tenth. It's not just later this year, it's two weeks from now, with more consideration planned for later in August. That's happening now. Funding has already changed hands from high-speed rail to Caltrain. These are things that have happened and are happening and will continue to happen. This is not speculative future use. This is a present use. I want to note that this use is of vital importance statewide. Governor Newsom declared a housing emergency. The voters of California declared that this should be a high-speed rail train from San Francisco to Los Angeles. Federal Transit Administrator Fernandez, in March of two thousand and twenty-two, said that high-speed rail isn't a nice-to-have, it's a must-have. Respectfully, this is an infrastructure project of statewide and frankly, national importance, and constitutes the greater public use than the street, street project. Not to take away from the use and importance of housing in this market. Nevertheless, critical infrastructure of statewide importance simply by magnitude is the greater public use. We respectfully object to the proposed resolution of necessity, and we respectfully request that you vote this resolution down. Thank you very much for your time and attention tonight.
Thank you, Steve. So I see another hands raised, except Elaine's, and it went down. We have a motion and we have a second. Elaine, can you please call for the vote?
Councilmember?
Mayor? I'm, I'm sorry. I, I, one quick question to the city manager. City manager, can you explain about California high-speed rail's funding?
Yeah, yes, thank you. Well, currently, there is no funding in place for the San Jose to San Francisco portion. In our recent proposed budget, Governor Newsom proposed a four-point-two billion dollars in funding for work on a high-speed rail, just in the San Joaquin Valley only. The legislature has not approved the governor's budget proposal, and there's no current state or federal monies that are specifically earmarked for the San Jose to San Francisco segment. And the February twenty-third, twenty twenty-two high-speed rail draft twenty twenty-two business plan prepared by the California Legislative Analyst Office, it states that the High-Speed Rail Authority, and I quote, "has not identified how construction costs for the portions of Phase One beyond the Merceda-Bakersfield segment will be funded." And so it's going to be many, many decades before high-speed rail comes this way. So, I mean, that, that's the status of the funding.
Thank you, city manager. Yes, we are, Vice Mayor. Elaine, let's elect to proceed.
Yes, Councilmember Snyder.
Yes.
Councilmember Oliver?
Aye.
Councilmember Fong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pappen?
Yes.
Mayor Oliva?
Aye.
City Council adopted a resolution of necessity, sorry, declaring a portion of the certain property interest APN zero nine three three five two zero two zero as necessary for public purpose and authorize the initiation, initial, initiation of condemnation proceeding for the acquisition of copyrights to extend California Drive and for the overhead utilities by a vote five to zero.
Thank you, Elaine. Item number eleven, receive the proposed operating budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two and twenty-three, and adopt a resolution of the Millbrae City Council appropriating the operating budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. And this is another action item, council. Do we have a report?
Yes, sorry about that, Mayor. I will like to introduce Mr. Mike Sun, the city's finance director for a staff report. Hey, Mike, we are having problems picking up your microphone.
Ah, there we go. Sorry about that. Thank you, City Manager Williams. Let me go ahead and share the screen. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. Today I'll be going through a brief presentation on the proposed operating budget. We had gone to the city council approximately two weeks ago on May tenth to preview the budget study sessions for the general fund and the other operating funds. So just to highlight the budget highlights that we have, our budget, our operating budget is eighty-five-point-three million dollars in expenditures for all funds. And it's at thirty-six-point-six million in expenditures for the general fund. Just to reiterate, the cost containment measures are continuing to work. We're offsetting the reduction in revenue due to the pandemic with these cost containment measures. We're also having critical capital projects move forward. For next year, that would be the anticipated completion of the water tank project, sewer main replacements, co-generator replacement at the water pollution control plant, water main replacements at the downtown Broadway and the Wani Drive, and quite a few other projects going along. Just want to kind of remind the council that the revenue projections that we're really looking at are about thirty-four-point-six million in general fund sources for next fiscal year. The largest piece is property tax, and just to show, for each dollar in property tax, Millbrae gets approximately sixteen cents. So if a property is about a million dollars and you get one percent of that as a whole for property tax, Millbrae would get sixteen percent of that, which is about sixteen hundred bucks. And then there's sales tax, which also breaks down to nine-point-three-seven-five percent. That's the tax rate in Millbrae. The state actually gets about six percent, and then there's county pieces in transit as well, but Millbrae itself gets one percent of the nine-point-three-seven-five percent. Just a quick reminder on that. For general fund expenditures, we're looking at thirty-six-point-six million. That's what it looks like for next year. Just a couple of quick items of note. There's minor changes from the study sessions. One of them is general government's now going to include sixty thousand dollars in contractual services. And that's to kind of help the city out with their position and help facilitate that at the state and the federal level. There's some minor revenues and expenditure projection updates, including an increase in general liability fund revenue and a reduction in the expenditure, and also including some interest revenue and some funds as well. One thing of note that we do want to bring up is there is a state budget trailer bill that worked its way across the Assembly and the Senate Budget Subcommittee Number Four. If it passes, what the net effect really is, is the state's not going to be paying as much towards excess ERAF, which is the Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund. Just a really brief history. Back in two thousand and four, the state had made a promise to use VLF swap to continue to pay their obligations. What this new trailer bill is basically going to do is kind of reduce that by quite a bit. So the county has made a estimate. We're really looking at about eight-two thousand dollars of an effect in Millbrae next year, but it actually balloons up to quite a bit in fiscal year thirty-one, thirty-two, which is about one-point-three-five million. So now, that's assuming, of course, all schools will be training basic aid. But that is something critical that we're watching and keeping a clear eye on. So wanted to kind of bring that up. On all, our recommendations to adopt the proposed fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three general fund and operating budget and appropriate funds to the capital improvement program. What we'll be doing is coming to the Planning Commission for the review of the CIP, and then we're going to propose the CIP adoption at the June fourteenth meeting. Questions?
Council questions? Public comments? This is an action item. Thank you. Second it. Could we please get a vote? Somebody help Elaine. Is she all right? Yeah.
Yes, sorry about that earlier. Okay. Councilmember Snyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliver?
Aye.
Councilmember Fong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pappen?
Aye.
Mayor Oliva?
Aye.
Is existing item number eleven passed by a vote of five to zero?
Thank you, Elaine. Go get some water. Moving on to item number twelve. It's ten o'clock. Can we get a consensus that we're going to go on and finish this up by ten-thirty? Council, I need a nod. A yes. Keep moving, okay. Number, item number twelve, a resolution authorizing the city manager or designated to execute a revised lease agreement with Millbrae Montessori School, Inc. for licensed preschool and early childhood recreation operations partnerships at the Millbrae Recreation Center. And this, again, council, is an action item.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would just like to introduce Mackenzie Brady, the Recreation Director here at the city of Millbrae, for the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. As City Manager Williams said, this is Mackenzie Brady, Recreation Director, and I'm going to move along as quickly as possible here. If my slides will move forward. There we go. All right. Reviewing the timeline, lease terms, looking at the preschool space as well as the recommendation. In two thousand and nineteen, staff issued a request for statements of interest, did interviews with potential vendors and operators, and reviewed terms in the agreement. In two thousand and twenty, staff recommended to council to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a lease agreement. In May of last year, we executed the initial agreement. And in January of this year, Millbrae Montessori School requested a lease revision due to declining enrollment and revenue during COVID-nineteen. In March and April of this year, staff researched of current market rates and ongoing discussions helped us to give some background for potential revisions of the lease. And in May of this year, the Recreation Center Subcommittee of the City Council met to discuss the lease terms. With three, with potential review and approval tonight, pending, pending the, the item with that action, moving forward for next month, preschool operator will hopefully be moving in furniture and equipment into the facility. And then in September of twenty-two, twenty-two, the September is the anticipated preschool opening day after all licensing is complete. The original lease terms, lease negotiation terms that was approved by council in May of two thousand and twenty-one was an amount of twelve thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents a month, plus the cost of utilities, which is five dollars and two cents a square foot, based on the twenty-four-hundred-square-foot space for, for the design at that time, and that was for a ten-year term. And due to COVID-nineteen impacts to revenue and enrollment, Montessori School has requested a renegotiation of the lease to align with their enrollment. And the Recreation Subcommittee recommended an amended minimum rent of seventy-five-hundred a month, which is three dollars and fifty-six cents a square foot, plus the cost of utilities for a five-year contract with a two-year option instead of the ten-year term, which was originally negotiated. And for each child registered over thirty-eight, so numbers thirty-nine through forty-eight, the lease would escalate at an incremental value of two-hundred dollars a child, up to a maximum of ninety-five-hundred dollars a month total, and that would be four dollars and fifty-one cents a square foot. And the final design of the preschool space is actually reduced by three-hundred-and-twenty-seven square feet through the design build process for a total of two thousand one hundred and eight square feet. So all other terms remain the same. So as you can see, there is a reduction in square footage by three-hundred-and-twenty-seven square feet, as well as a reduction in the rent and in the lower, or a lesser term, from ten years to five years with a two-year option. You see, here is the preschool space on the left side. Here you can see two day, two preschool classrooms, the, the northern side and the southern side, and each one would hold a maximum of twenty-four students, based on licensing standards for a total of forty-eight youth. And the restroom here has child height fixtures. Right here in the space, there is a staff restroom, a food prep area, an isolation rest area, an office space, as well as a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot outdoor secure play yard. Next steps would be for, for staff recommending that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager or designated to execute the revised lease agreement as proposed with Millbrae Montessori School. It will take any questions.
Councilmember Snyder?
I'm happy to make a motion to approve. I do have one question. The county and the state, all through COVID, talked about creating funding to create more childcare centers. Were we able to get our, get any of that money donated to us? And is it too late? Can we still go after some of that funding? It's still considered one of the major improvements after or during COVID.
I, I can answer that. So, Councilmember, that, that was for operating funds of existing childcare facilities to keep the doors open, not, not for, you know, new capital improvements or anything like that.
Okay. If I find another link, I'll send it to you. Again, motion, motion to approve. And good job, all of you.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah, I have Councilmember Oliver, and then Councilmember Fong. Use your hand up. Was that you or Ruben? Who, I don't know who said madam mayor, but.
I did. Madam Mayor.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Fong. Sorry.
I just got a quick question, Ms. Brady. You said it's a five-year lease with a two-year option. Is it option to the school or option to us?
Be an option to the school to, to continue the lease for an additional two years.
I see. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'll, I'll second the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Oliver?
Thank you. Just to recap the lease that protects the city's assets here while it's but also is connected to program, make this to be a successful program. One just very minor comment on the lease at the bottom of page three, this is page seven, where it mentions the minimum and maximum rental amount shall be adjusted as described in adjustment up to three percent. That's not just the minimum and maximum, it's also the two-hundred per month per child, but also that incremental amount goes each year as well.
If I may, Councilmember Oliver, I had difficulty hearing you. You were saying to clarify.
Yeah, just to clarify where it says the minimum and maximum rental amounts shall be adjusted as described below. I think the, it's not just the minimum and the maximum, but it's also the two-hundred per month, that incremental amount. That would be adjusted as well. So to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment? Kayla, can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Oliver?
Aye.
Councilmember Fong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pappen?
Aye.
Mayor Oliva?
Yes, aye.
All right. Item number twelve, passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Item number thirteen was taken off the agenda. So we'll go to item number fourteen to consider formation and selection of various city council ad hoc subcommittees for the city of Millbrae's seventy-fifth Diamond Anniversary Celebration Planning. This is also an action item, council. Can we get rid of the background noise? Somebody's, there's a lot of background noise. Somebody needs to get muted. It's all mute.
Okay, Mayor, I will just give a, a very brief presentation as the city clerk puts the slides up. It looks like her screen is frozen. So I will, I, let me be the first. To say happy birthday to the city of Milbury. Next January fourteenth. The city was officially incorporated in nineteen forty eight. And so next January fourteenth does mark our historic seventy fifth anniversary. We had brought this item to the city council a few months ago. To establish an ad hoc subcommittee of the city council for planning. And the feedback that we have received from, from the city council is you all wanted to be involved, so come back with some options to. Form a couple of different sub, ad hoc subcommittees of council that are necessary to. You know, to make sure that we have a, a nice celebration. And so Elaine, if you can just move to the next, I think it's slide four. Okay, so that's good. So we've come up with three ad hoc subcommittees for the council's consideration. The first one, first bullet is an anniversary planning and program subcommittee. And this is to develop the vision and make recommendations. And all this will come back to the full city council for review and adoption. But to. Develop the vision, recommended programs, the events for the, the celebration itself and, and the two thousand twenty three calendar year. And also select the citizens advisory committee. The second subcommittee is the anniversary marketing and promotion subcommittee. This would be the creation of promotional and marketing materials such as, say, a city logo, a special logo for the seventy fifth anniversary. It is a diamond jubilee event, advertisements, different swag items. It could also be banners that are designed and made, you know, that aren't our light poles. So, so that's the type of. Of programming, marketing, promotion that this subcommittee would, would be responsible for. And the third is the anniversary sponsorship and fundraising subcommittee. This would be to seek sponsorship for events and, and fundraising opportunities, perhaps with some of the nonprofits out in Milbury. And then. With that, as I mentioned, the selection of a citizens advisory subcommittee, I think is extremely important. There was one that was created. For the fiftieth anniversary and it worked exceptionally well. So Mayor, hand it over to you and the, and the council for discussion, or be happy to answer any questions or provide further information.
So, well, I just have one question. This is actually an action item. So do you want us, what do you want us to vote on this, this subcommittee purpose slide?
No, no, form subcommittee. So if there are any volunteers, for example, two members of a council, of the council. Make an ad hoc subcommittee. So.
So actually take these three different bullet points and, and get two volunteers on each one?
Correct. Yeah.
Perfect. Vice Mayor, which one would you like to volunteer for?
I just want to say I had a Blue Angel flyby for the last anniversary we had. It was a model Blue Angel, but it still counts. No tax payment. So. I guess the planning and program.
Council member Fung?
Thank you, Mayor. Now that I learned that Milbury is actually a Capricorn, so that's nice. And I happen to be a Capricorn myself as well. So I'm happy to volunteer for the planning and program subcommittee as well.
Hey, I'm going in no particular order here. So there's two other spots here left. Council member Snyder?
Well. Tell me how it would work because the two committees that I liaison with are already working on projects for. The seventy fifth birthday. So if I'm not on planning and program, how can I liaison to culture arts, which is already planning the art events? And. Community enhancement, which is planning on how to riff up at least the public spaces on there. Both items kind of coming to council tonight. So if it's first come, first served. I, I don't, I, I don't think it's fair, but if that's the way it is, I've already talking to our new biotech companies about sponsorship. And working with our other community groups like the Chamber, already working with the Chamber on this. So. To me, this just makes it more difficult to get the job done.
So are you going to go on anniversary sponsorships and fundraising?
Well, I don't have any other choice, do I?
No, you had, do. You have anniversary marketing and promotional subcommittee.
And yet, how will I liaison with my committees? How will I tell them without it becoming a council?
We're all getting.
Serial meeting, without it becoming a serial meeting. Which to answer Gina Pappen is why the photographs are on council agenda tonight, to prevent a serial meeting.
Okay, let's, let's, Rub, council member Holliver, what, what committee would you like to be on?
I'm, I'm going to be off the council at the end of this year, so I'm not volunteering, but. My recommendation would be just to have one subcommittee. That way you don't have, you know, the left hand doesn't know what the right hand's doing. I think there, I think it could be problematic that. That would be my recommendation, just have one and then have that subcommittee work with. The citizens advisory committee and that citizens advisory committee could include. You know, a member of each of the city committees and commissions, as well as the other community organizations, such as Lions. Similar to what we did with the Recreation Center, it was called the Stakeholder Group.
So council member Holliver, you're not going to, you're not going to.
No, that's just my, my.
But you're not going to volunteer to help here?
I'm happy to volunteer, but I will not be a, a council member for two thousand twenty three, so I don't know what.
Holliver? If I may, just make a suggestion. I think since, if that's the case, then, you know, we welcome you to join the citizen advisory committee next year.
Well, this is for the planning throughout the year because the, the, the actual birthday is in January. So there's.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of planning to do and.
It's for remainder of this year, right?
Correct.
Okay, never mind.
So I'm going to respectfully ask if council member Snyder would take the anniversary sponsorship and fundraising committee, and I will. Be off council as well, but I'm happy to work through the, with whatever I can do for the marketing and promotion subcommittee. Curious, I'm curious to know what the, the chamber's doing. Because I'm the liaison for them. And you said you're working with them and I was the liaison for them.
I'm not working as a liaison. The chamber is a friend and I'm a chamber member. And I am trying to grow their membership. Annie, what happened last summer happened last summer. I, I can't, I don't want to humiliate you. They don't want to work with you. They don't want to work with the city council after what happened with the Art and Wine Festival.
Be a part of this either.
That was pretty insulting. I was pretty generous today. I, 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 I take a little bit of offense to that. It, it's not about what they want. I am the liaison and so I would like to know, are they having meetings? Are you going to answer that or no?
I, I don't know if they're having meetings for the, the Diamond Jubilee.
Well, you said. With them. So it's like, this is, this is our city event. So you, it might be.
I'm working on trying to get them sponsorships for the Art and Wine Festival.
Okay, that's different than this. Alrighty. What we have, we have two, we have two volunteers for the anniversary planning and programs committee. And if, if the city wants me, I will be off council and I'm happy to help with any, any of these committees. They're well organized the way, way it's laid out and I'm happy to donate my time going forward.
Thank you, madam mayor.
Is, is that, is that good recommendation, city manager?
Well, so, so to have an ad hoc subcommittee, there's typically two members on this to make it a subcommittee. In light of this, I, I. As your city manager, I, I actually agree with Ruben and his recommendation to have one subcommittee. Again, all of the information and recommendations from the subcommittee will be coming back to the full council for consideration.
Well, given, given that and his recommendation and me being off council and council member Snyder not, you know, wanting to really. Put her name on either of these things, why don't we, why don't, I, I would nominate Gina and Anders to be. The subcommittee for this purpose of the anniversary party.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you, madam mayor. We'll work this.
Well, I think we need to have a vote, though.
So move.
Second.
Elaine, can we please have a vote? You're muted.
All right. Council member Snyder?
No.
Um, council member Holliver?
Aye.
Council member Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pappen?
Aye.
Mayor Leva?
Aye.
The city council form a seventy fifth anniversary planning subcommittee. Appointing council member Gina Pappen and also Anders Fung as the subcommittee members. By a vote of five to zero.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but forward to one with council member Snyder dissent.
Thank you. We're go to new business, a resolution to launch a partnership between the city of Milbury's Public Works Department. The Community Enhancement Advisory Committee and volunteers in the community to implement, adopt a spot pilot program. This again, counsel is an action item.
And Mayor, the presentation, CDM, will be provided by Andrea Papa John, who was our environmental services manager. From our esteemed public works department.
Okay, one second. Let's see. Can you see my screen?
Again.
Great. Okay, good evening, madam mayor, council members. The person, the purpose of the presentation is to recommend the city council enact the resolution. To launch a partnership between the city of Milbury Public Works. The CEAC and community volunteers to implement the Adopt a Spot Pilot Program. Okay, that did work. All right. So adopt a spot programs have been established by cities and counties in the Bay Area and other parts of the country. They use community volunteers to assist in city maintenance and cleanup efforts. These programs enable individuals, community groups, schools and other organizations to play an active role. In maintaining like the beauty and cleanliness of their neighborhoods. They also encourage and support volunteerism, environmental stewardship, and develop a sense of community pride. The CEAC believes that an adopt a spot program is beneficial to the community. And is motivated to establish the adopt a spot pilot program. So in, and also the CEAC two thousand twenty two work plan outlines the adopt a spot program. The work plan was adopted November twenty third of two thousand twenty one, and it outlines sort of the steps to implementing the program. CEAC has discussed in details. How the program would work with public, with public works. And. It can result in minor changes to the scope of the program from the work plan. But we're looking to launch a one year pilot so we can gauge interest, track metrics, and also. Review and modify the program as needed after twelve months. These are the proposed like priority adopt a spots. And they have been approved by public works. They are, you know, throughout the city and there are various areas. Some could be for litter cleanup, others could be for planting. I'll give you an example. One thing that has, but one area that has been discussed is the Bayside Park entrance corners. And there could be some enhancement and planting and maintenance in that area. There's also the Spur Trail entrance at Magnolia and Milbury Avenue. That could be a priority adopt a spot. So those are a couple of the spots that we would work to assign volunteers. And yeah, the three different services that are outlined are litter and trash removal. Planting and maintenance and also weeding. So just to get into a little bit about how it works. I won't go into a lot of detail in the essence of time. But initially, the. Program would start with an, an, an interested volunteer to complete the application form that you see on the slide. It could be. A group of volunteers as well. And the form has all the basic information. They would email it to, they complete the application and initially it would be. Emailed electronically to public works. Once it's received, public works in collaboration with the CAC. And the volunteer would select a site that best aligns with the volunteers' interests and their schedule. And before any work can be prepared at a site, each volunteer will be provided with a copy of the DAPASPOD volunteer guidelines. It includes a waiver and release of liability form and a program reporting form. So the guidelines detail general conduct and safety procedures required of the volunteers while working. Okay, and the volunteers must also sign a waiver and release a liability form before participating in the program. So they acknowledge they're performing services solely on a voluntary basis. And our city attorneys have looked over these and helped us develop them, review them and approve them. And finally, this is the reporting form. This will assist public works and the CAC engaging the effectiveness and success of the adopt a spot program. So we're going to ask that the volunteers or the group. Fill out a report on a regular basis so that we can, you know. Summarize all the metrics at the end of the pilot program. So in summary, we recommend the city council approve. The resolution to launch the adopt a spot pilot program. The kickstart of the program would be volunteer members from the Community Enhancement Advisory Committee. And we have discussed that they would be willing to adopt the Bayside Manor site. To showcase the program and to educate the community and how they can also participate. And also lastly, to encourage community participation and outreach will be conducted through all. Social media and city channels. And we, in parallel, could develop a website to help post the program information. So thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any, any questions that you may have.
Counsel, questions? Sorry, council member Holliver?
I think council member Snyder was.
Just a point of, of clarification, the pilot project or beta test at Bayside Manor would. Go out to the public to see if they want to help and, and the MCAP members would be there to assist in. Kind of helping the neighborhood there that might want to be involved. If nobody from the neighborhood volunteers, then MCAP will do it. So we can kind of learn what's entailed in getting it all ready. Getting all the pieces put together.
Council member Holliver?
Yeah, this looks like a great program. Excited to get it done. Just a couple of quick. Couple of spots that maybe could be added. One was the Lions. As well as the Spur Trail entrance at the meter.
Great, thank you for those suggestions.
Council member Fung, did I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve, please.
Happen second.
Perfect. Can we call for the vote, please?
Are there any com, just to make sure there's no.
Oh, sorry, no public comments. Let me see. Thank you, Joan. I don't see any hands raised. Thank you.
All right, council member Snyder?
Hi.
Sorry, there's a hand up.
Well, I'm so sorry, and I can follow up with Andrea separately with regards to the outreach. My recommendation.
With regards to the outreach, my recommendation is we actually go into the community and walk around and hand out flyers and explain what it is. There are many people who we don't reach through social media. But I can follow up with you separately. I've been doing this with planet savers for over a year.
Thank you. I would appreciate that. That would be wonderful. Great. Thanks, Amy.
Later.
Okay, sounds good. Did I miss anybody else? I didn't see it. I don't see any hands. Help me, guys. Nope. Okay, let's continue the vote, please.
After the vote.
Yes.
Councilmember Snyder?
Hi.
Councilmember Oliver?
Hi.
Councilmember Fang?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Pappen?
Hi.
Mayor Aliva?
Hi.
Item number five passed by a vote of five to zero.
Through the mayor, a comment?
Yes.
Um, MCAC has been working on this concept for over two years. And I just want to give a huge thank to Carol Krasilnikov, Jean Wong, Andrea Papa John, and Craig Centus, who really worked hard to try to check all the liabilities with the city attorney who ran through the liability form. It seemed, it went quickly tonight, but there was an awful lot of work in back of it. So thank you very much to the community volunteers and to staff.
Thank you.
For the record, it was item fifteen, not.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, not five, fifteens. And that leads us to sixteen that was pulled from the agenda, on to seventeen. The resolution approving a revised schedule of maximum garbage rates in accordance with the franchise agreement with South San Francisco Scavenger Company. And again, council, this is an action item.
And Mayor, City Council, again, Andrea Papa John, our Environmental Services Manager, will be providing this, this presentation.
Okay, pulling up this presentation. Great, so Madam Mayor, council, thank you for this opportunity to present. The purpose of the presentation is to request approval of a resolution for a new maximum garbage rate schedule. The City of Millbrae has a franchise agreement with South San Francisco Scavenger, which was extended in 2017 for eight years until 2025. The agreement requires that rates are reviewed and adjusted accordingly each year with rates effective July 1st. The agreement calls for a three-year cycle of rate adjustments. The first two years, the maximum allowable garbage rates are based on eighty percent of any changes in the Consumer Price Index, CPI. And every third year, any potential changes in rates are based on a rate survey of a pre-selected group of cities. So last year, may, you may recall, we did the rate survey. So this year, the rate increases are being adjusted according to the CPI, which would result in a 5.19% increase. So here are the examples of the adjusted rates based on the 5.19% increase.
Mayor, may, may, Andre, we cannot see your presentation.
I really apologize. Thank you for letting me know. Let's see.
No problem.
Share screen one. I still don't think that's working. You know what? Can I try one more time, please? Okay. Okay, so now.
Now we can see it. Thank you.
I think, um, okay, I apologize. I think I have this backwards, but I will just, can I just expand this? Um, can you see the full screen or you're just seeing the notes?
We can see everything.
We see the full screen.
Thank you. All right. Okay, so I'll just show you. We'll start with the, um, these are the example of the adjusted rates based on the 5.19% increase. And so staff is recommending the adoption of a resolution approving the new garbage rate schedule. South San Francisco Scavenger also includes a notice of potential rate increase on customer bills in June. So again, we request adoption of a resolution approving the new maximum garbage rate schedule, which will become effective July 1st, 2022, in full accordance with the franchise agreement with South San Francisco Scavenger Company. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Council, councilmember Schneider. Councilmember Schneider, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Um, thank you, Andrea. What's the mini can rate? The 20-gallon rate?
The mini currently?
And what is it going up to? Current? And what's the increase there?
Okay, I can tell you, um, let's see here, let me just.
And for the public who's watching, if the, these are, these are significant garbage rate increases, but we are living in inflationary times. The best thing you can do to try to save money is to go to a smaller can size. And the best way you do that is really watching what you shop for and make sure you purchase products that are easily recyclable or don't have as much packaging. And, and to participate in the compost program. But I'm surprised I only got one letter complaining about the rate increase.
And to answer your question, the current 20 gallon or similar in Millbrae is $24.60 a month. And so that would be at a 5.19% increase as well.
I can't do the math that quickly, but hopefully people out there. If inflation comes back to the way it had been, and we're so spoiled by how low it was for so many years, what will this mean for next year and the year after? And you may not be able to answer that.
Can you repeat the question? Sorry.
If inflation comes back into control, as our property or our mortgage rates go up, but what, what will happen to our garbage rates if inflation slows down? Cost, the CIP goes down.
It'll be readjusted during their three-year.
Okay, and always, always at, on July, the change would happen next July, 2023?
Correct, and next year would also be based on CPI.
You apply that formula every year.
Okay. Um, last question. I know that South City Scavenger has started to swap out some of the carts with self-locking carts, which are being recommended in windy climates all over the world to reduce ocean pollution. Do we have any agreement with South City Scavenger to expedite, especially on our hills, our really steep hills where garbage cans get knocked over, to at, at least swap out the broken containers with these new locking devices, self-locking cans? And I know we have, and we had them at the cleanup in September, I think.
Correct, yes, we can certainly discuss that with them. I, um, I would have to defer to one of the representatives from South San Francisco Scavenger that are here. I don't think it's in our agreement. Yeah, and it's not part of the, that's not part of what we're voting on right now. We're talking about rates.
Mayor Leva, I appreciate you correcting me every time you can, but this is my field. And when we talk about rates, we should be talking about services. And we're not doing that now, but we should be. And that has been the problem in every year that we increase or talk about garbage rates without looking at service levels and service types. That is a problem that the city has had well before I got on council, and it really needs to stop. I don't correct you when you're talking about real estate. This is my field. And these are changes that we need to make to comply with MPDES permits.
Continue.
I'm done.
Okay, anybody else have anything to say? This is an action item. Do we have a motion?
Since the expert council member, do we have answers to these questions?
Answers to what question, Gina? Let's just pour it on tonight. You guys already got your other dreams, so.
Can we be a little more respectful, Ms. Schneider?
Yeah, when you show some respect, Gina. It's a two-way street, you know, and you haven't shown it to me for 10 years, so I don't expect it now.
Questions?
Do we have a motion? I'll make the motion. May I get a second, please?
Second.
Elaine, can we please have the vote?
Councilmember Snyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliver?
Hi.
Councilmember Fang?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Pappen?
Respectfully, yes.
Mayor Leva?
Yes.
Item number 17 passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Last item, item under 18. Approve the section of the historical photos to be displayed in the new recreation center main hallway corridors as recommended by the Millbrae Cultural Arts Advisory Committee and Millbrae Historical Society. May I let everybody know this is also an action item?
And Mayor, if I may, real quick, before I introduce McKinsey Brady for the presentation. Um, the question was raised earlier this evening during the agenda review, why this did not go to the Subcommittee, Recreation Center Subcommittee. The reason why is because of timing. The timing is that we want to get these photos approved, if that's a desire of the City Council. And because of timing, we did not have enough time to have the action of the City Council to get the photos printed and framed and hung in time for the June 11th ribbon cutting. So that's why we just cut to the chase, brought it to the full council for expediency.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, it would have been nice to know that the hard work of Flowers Committee and everybody was even pointed in this direction, uh, which was not presented to the Subcommittee prior to this. You know, a lot of work's gone in to the Recreation Center here. And then to, um, you know, we've got different committees deciding where things are going to be hung and presented every. We, we want to do this right and make everybody a part of the efforts here. But it's, I don't, not sure this needs to be an action item at this point. And I'm not sure we need to authorize all the pictures. I mean, let, let's do it right. Maybe some look better in some location as opposed to another. So I mean, that's the whole idea. Now it seems like everybody's stepping all over different areas here. And, um.
Can I make a suggestion? How about if we watch the, let's, let's.
Of course, of course. And then. I, I, I've looked at the sapporo. It's good. So let's move on from there, uh, but to, for the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, would you like me to move forward with the presentation?
Oh, yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Mayor. Members of the City Council, McKinsey Brady, Recreation Director. This is to approve the selection of historical photos to be displayed in the new Recreation Center main hallway corridors as recommended by the Millbrae Cultural Arts Advisory Committee and Millbrae Historical Society. We'll review the timeline, themes, and then the intended photos for the first floor hallway, first floor adjacent hallway, which is on the east side of the building along the Great Hall. The second floor hallway, the Recreation Center office, as well as the recommendation. On May 12th of this year, city staff, a member of the Millbrae Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, MCAC, and the Millbrae Historical Society met at the Millbrae Museum to review photos on display and archived at the location. On May 14th, MCAC Subcommittee met to refine the photo selection and finalize thematic placement. On May 18th, MCAC held a special meeting and members approved the final list of themes, photos, and hanging locations. And then today is the review and potential approval by City Council. The first floor hallway, pre-1948, was a theme that was determined for this location and this, this hanging location. And you can see seven photos here. Sixteen Mile House, 1929 map of Millbrae, 1946 El Camino Real, Mills Mansion, Mills Field, which is the old airport, steam engine, and then the trolley. The first floor adjacent hallway along the Great Hall. This is incorporation near 1948, downtown Millbrae, Smith's Drive-In, the Millbrae Dairy, Old Safeway. And the paper factory photo as well. And all of these photos, these are not the best quality, but the, the photos that are being or would be reprinted would be in, in better form. Second floor hallway, 1970s to present, the first art and wine festival in 1971, Japanese Culture Fest, Millbrae baseball team, this is a minor league, or I believe, no, that is not the minor league team. There was a, there is another photo of the minor league team. Lunar New Year Celebration, Millbrae Theater, as well as a student band. And the one photo selected for the Recreation Center office is the community center in the 1970s. Fiscal impact, the cost for the framed photos is $300 each, so $2,100 for the first seven frames. So you place it in the first floor main hallway, plus $175 for staff time for hanging. An additional $3,900 for the additional frames, plus an additional $325 staff time. So the total cost for the entire project for all 20 photos would be $6,500. Next steps are staff recommending that the City Council approve by motion the historical photos selected by MCAC and the Millbrae Historical Society for display in the main hallway corridors of the new Recreation Center. And we have Amy Lauer, a member of the Millbrae Cultural Arts Advisory Committee here for any questions, as well as I believe Tom Dotty and John Mitas.
Council, do you have any questions? Vice Mayor, is your hand still up, or you want to speak again?
I'll let some other council member go first.
Councilmember Oliver?
Thank you. I am okay with these photos. I think they are good photos. I would just, because if we're going to be putting these up, we should also include some, you know, context about, you know, some type of, you know, two-sentence description of each of these photos instead of just.
Yeah, that's part of the plan. Sorry, that wasn't this presentation. That is part of the plan.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Well, that's included. Okay, I've seen that book, yeah. Um, I'm a little agnostic as to where, you know, they go, whether it's the first floor or second floor. The only thing I would suggest is that the photo that is presented for the office, the real community center, I would appreciate if that were displayed publicly somewhere during first or second floor hallway. I know we had some discussions at the Subcommittee about having some type of a display about the old center. I know there are some photos that we have from the, um, the ribbon cutting, or the groundbreaking back from that building was first built. So it'd be good to be able to present that publicly.
Is that it?
Yeah, other than that, I don't really have any comments about the photos themselves.
Thank you. Councilmember Schneider?
Um, first, a little history. The city manager mentioned to me to bring it as the liaison to the Culture Arts Committee about reaching out and putting some artwork in in time for the grand opening. And brought it to Amy and Jonathan. MCAC had a tour of the rec center. And then working with the History, Historical Society, they together collected those photographs. And it came to a special MCAC meeting, which is why it also couldn't go to a council Subcommittee, because that would have been a serial meeting. And that's again, why it's here tonight. In the full presentation at MCAC, the photographs were grouped into, um, historical timeframes that then apparently, and this is probably more to do with staff and nothing to do, although maybe it was Amy and John and, and Tom, figured out which photographs would fit with that history period in the space that was there. And that's in the full presentation that was done at MCAC. in the space that was there, and that's in the full presentation that was done at MCAC. So I want to say thank you to Amy, I think John, well, all of MCAC at this additional special meeting, but, uh, special thanks to Tom Doughty, to John Munez, and Amy, who spent a great deal of time going through the archives and looking for the photos, and an additional special thank you to Tom Doughty, who was taking all the photographs and, um, enhancing them within limits and getting them down to a very specialized photo location down in Scotts Valley, and taking all that additional time of his, and as well as, I think, donating some of the negatives. I could be wrong on that. But, um, you know, we, we are very fortunate to have the Historical Society and their willingness to work on this project, and I, I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to the people who put the effort in here. Um, it's just, uh, we have a new building here, and, um, you know, placement of, it, it's hard to tell, are some of these a collage, or each one of them different, because you've got some color photos? You've got some black and white photos. Uh, again, I, it, we have to be very, um, careful, are all, is all the framing the same? We're not seeing that. It's just a six thousand dollar plus expenditure. And we have a brand-new building here. Um, this is not the Historical Society building, but certain references to our history, um, would be nice here. But again, you know, I think the idea was presented but not, then not communicated. We didn't even know this was coming. Um, I think we're missing an opportunity in a brand-new rec center to display some new art. Um, as you enter on the first floor here, we've got, uh, an opportunity to do multiple things. So, uh, yeah, I just. It's being decided. I really think with public art, you know, a brand-new public building, it should have been presented in such a way that even the public has a say about this. But look at the building there that Eduardo has up. I'm just not, um, comfortable with what's being presented here and just, you know, put in a building, and we didn't really, the context of the building, I, I just don't think it matches. So, um, you know, I think we might be able to put them somewhere, but what's being asked right now is that you put them down the main hallway, you put the, i- it, it seems like it's just going to take over the entire building, and we have an opportunity to really make some exciting decisions as far as the art goes here. But it almost seems like we're turning this into a Historical Society building, and I'm not sure that that's what is intended by a Recreation Center like this.
Well, I can, I can try to take part of that. So to answer your first question, Gina, the, the intent is that the photographs would be as consistent as possible in terms of the framing and the size. And to your point about the collage, Tom, Tom is going to decompose those, that, there were notes in the original deck about, uh, so there would be one photo per, uh, the black and white versus color.
Any, yeah, wait, could you, so is it a, could you just clarify for me?
Not our collages. No, they would not be.
They're not. Okay.
For example, the paper factory, that would just be the one picture. Uh, the only one, I mean, part of what we tried to, I mean, and I, so the brief we were given is pick photos from the Historical Si- Society for these three hallways. So that was the brief. In addition, there was vision, and I don't know who puts, put together the briefs for what is the complete vision for art in the rec center. But when we walked through, what was brought up is that, uh, there was a desire for a rotating public art display where local artists could display their art. Um, so that was sort of separate. But the, the brief we were given is photos for these halls, seven for one hallway, three to four for another, and three to four for another. So when we talked about it, we thought what made sense is, you know, the natural groupings and, and, you know, fortunately, the way the photograph selections presented themselves is, uh, the, the, the biggest wall would be the beginning, and then we would do different, um, time periods, and the place where we had to stretch a little bit, which is where some of the color comes in, is we wanted to make sure that the photographs were inclusive and people saw themselves represented today, which is why in the last section, we pulled in, uh, the Japanese Cultural, Culture Festival, which is the current photo, and Lunar New Year, which is a current photo. So those are color. Um, there's one from the fifties, which I thought was colorized, and Tom Doughty said, no, it wasn't. It was Millbrae Downtown in the fifties, and that was from a postcard. So that one can go, um, I hear you. I think that the, you know, it, it is a lot of historical photos, but, um, that was the brief we were given to work on, and, you know, that sort of is beyond the decisions that I was given to make.
And, and who asked for the brief?
Um, it was somewhere between, I don't know, um, I think it was, you know, it was a rec center idea. I don't know if it was, I don't know exactly who, who it was, uh, but we, we were scheduled to walk through the historical uh, museum and actually when we were, went through the tour, I think it was, it was, uh, I don't know, Tom, I, maybe it was your vision. I'm not really sure where that came from.
Okay.
But we're more of that project people putting together.
This was a staff recommendation, but it also came from, um, an idea with, uh, tagging with, uh, the historic, uh, committee folks.
Councilmember Oliver, is your hand still up? And Councilmember Schneider, uh, you, would you like to speak again?
Yes.
Okay, let's go first with Councilmember Schneider.
Um. Thing about art is it, it, it can be changed, and the walls are still going to be there if this wor- as the work swaps out. The MCAC, in their approved work plan, is also working on a citywide public art plan where there will be public input on that, and it'll come back to council for approval on that. And that could be art in any public building. You know, that could be art in the sewage treatment plant building. Um, you know, so that will be coming back to council. I believe that the emphasis on this and the timing was to have something on the walls for the open, for the ribbon cutting, so they're not bare walls. It doesn't mean that this is going to be the art that will be there fifty years from now. That's the thing about art. You can swap it around, and hopefully we'll find places for this really lovely collection of Millbrae's history going back, uh, on that. There was one topic that the council may want to discuss that we talked about at MCAC, because the last two photographs are in color and everything else is more historical and black and white. You can take a color photograph and put it into gray tones. When you look at the, the, the lion or the dragon, it's so beautiful in golden red. When I saw that, it's such a lovely splash of color. I would hate to put it into black and white, but that could be a council decision tonight. Keeping them all black and white or letting the later ones be in color as photography evolved.
Councilmember Oliver?
I was gonna say pretty much what Councilmember Schneider said, that, you know, I think it would be, it is important to have something um, on the walls for the opening, uh, even if these are not permanent, they can be moved around. We could eventually, I think there's value having these photos blown up. We could eventually put them in the library or at City Hall or some other location, uh, if they're not permanently be in the Recreation Center.
Uh, Vice Mayor, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yeah, I think we need some clarification on future discussions between committees in the Brown Act. Uh, I do, and I understand art can be rotated here. Uh, it's like a six thousand dollar expenditure. Uh, I'm just not comfortable with it this time, so that would be my vote, and that's, doesn't need a further comment.
I make a motion to approve the artwork as it went through the process, and, uh, there was, Amy, I don't know, a, a motion to approve the artwork. We're.
We need to take public comment, too.
Okay, sorry.
No worries. Do we have any public comment? Any hands raised? Everybody go to sleep? No public comments. We have a motion from Councilmember Schneider.
I'll second that.
A second from Councilmember Oliver. Could we please call for the vote, Elaine?
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Oliver?
Aye.
Sorry, just to clarify, um, Councilmember Schneider, are you saying this is, this, what it sounds like to me is this is what you want to put on just for the opening, but not permanently? Is that correct?
That, that's not my, uh, position or opinion. What was asked of the Cultural Arts and Historical Society was to create some art so that there would be art for the grand opening. And I think the MCAC will come back with a long-term art range, including the other desire for rotating art. That will come back to city council, but for now and for the time, as MCAC fundraises for public art, or unless the public donates art or temporary, we allow them to sell art, that's something else that will come back to council. Yeah, if you go to the Board of Supervisors, they have rotating artists, and you can sell your art in the Board of Supervisors hallway. They've been doing it for decades. Uh, Foster City does it in their community center, but that's all something to come back to the city council in the future. But for this purpose, to get it and time and get them hung up, um, MCAC didn't really choose where the photos are going. I had nothing to do with it, other than I am the liaison, so I was at the meeting, which makes the serial meeting an issue. Um, this is for the rec center grand opening, and they can be changed over time.
I, I just want to be sure what I'm voting on. So, so these are the photos that we just saw. They are going to be hung in the rec center for the grand opening only, and then it's not a permanent.
No, they're, they're not going to be taken down the next day or anything like that.
What Ruben says. They're going to be there until there's another art plan that is approved by council. But until then, it's better to, uh, these are actually quite lovely. They're going to be in matching, matching wooden frames. They're going to be very elegant, um, done by professional, working professional photographers, and we, and it'll make the rec center look really terrific when we have the ribbon cutting and for the time until the new programs roll out.
I, I would be okay with it if it's temporary and then come back to the council for more of a permanent proposal. I mean, we don't want to see bare wall at the grand opening as well. I understand that, but, you know, I think it would be okay for me if this will come back to the council for a more robust, uh, plan in terms of what artwork is going to be displayed at the rec center.
Which is part of what MCAC is working on with the Millbrae Public Art Plan.
All right, that's fine. Uh, uh, I'll, I'll vote yes.
Vice Mayor Pappen? Now. Mayor Aliva?
Yes.
Item eighteen passed by a vote of four to one with Vice Mayor Pappen dissenting.
Okay, we made it through, eleven oh four. We're going to, uh, refrain from any council comments. Um, I do have a duty to let everybody know and remind everybody on this council that HART's annual networking fundraising, uh, event is coming back. It's this Thursday at Devil's Canyon, um, and they will be, uh, celebrating, uh, the retirement of Supervisor Horstley. So I encourage our city to look well-represented, but for, by the HART fundraiser and, um, Devil's Canyon. I'm, I don't usually take up the time and say nobody else can speak, but it's eleven oh four. And, um, I'd like to adjourn, and I'd like to adjourn with our thoughts and prayers in Texas right now for those eighteen young children. Thank you, everybody.